... board, learning about bylaws and zoning laws, regulations and safety concerns of this town. Having been a citizen for 47 years, I have watched several of the planning board chairs come and go. Kevin is someone we can all count on to make important decisions that will benefit this town for generations to come.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Seconded by Ms. Williams. Do we have any further nominations for chairman of planning board?
I'd like to go ahead and nominate Chairman Shea as to re-chair the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky. I'll second that. Is there anything you'd like to say, Mr. Robinson?
No, I would accept that nomination.
Excellent, as will I. All right. So our first order of business, we're going to vote on Mr. Robinson. We will take a roll call vote, and alphabetically, I believe we're in the right order. Mr. Gasky.
Mr. Gasky says nay.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says nay. Then we will vote on Mr. Shea.
We've already got three for Mr. Robinson.
Typically, we vote twice.
Oh, okay. John Gasky says yea.
And Mr. Shea says yea.
Kevin Robinson says nay.
Ellen Sodillo says nay.
Mary Ellen Williams says nay.
Excellent. Mr. Robinson, the chair is yours. Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Shea.
The pleasure is mine.
We appreciate your service as the chair.
The pleasure is mine, Mr. Robinson.
So if I may just make one technical statement. So we're going to nominate a vice chair and a clerk next. Typically, when someone makes a motion, they wait until it's second before they read their eloquent statement. So if someone has an eloquent statement for the clerk, or just wait until we get a second. That's usually how it works.
So then I guess my first act as the chair would be to ask for a nomination for vice chair.
I will nominate Ms. Sodillo for vice chair.
Second.
All right then. Anybody else?
I would nominate Connie Shea.
I will decline the nomination, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right then. Ms. Gasky.
Mr. Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen says aye. Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Excellent.
Next, we need to nominate a, is it a clerk?
A clerk.
A clerk. And I'd like to ask for a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Gasky.
No, thank you.
So if I may, of all the jobs on the planning board, the clerk is sort of the lighters lifting. You don't have to do minutes. In some places, the clerk's name goes on the hearing notices. And perhaps, although it's not written anywhere, you could be the chair pro temp in the event that neither of the chairs are here, so the clerk might run the meeting in the event that neither the chair or the vice chair was here, and you still were able to maintain a quorum.
It's my understanding that would that be the least, the latest person to be elected?
No, no. There's no pecking order or anything. Like, there's no seniority. It's like...
All right. So I would like to ask for a nomination for that position.
I think we're running out of candidates, so I will nominate Ms. Williams.
Do we have a second?
I am the second.
Ms. Gasky.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
I thought it was up.
You don't mean...
Not the seed.
I haven't seen this associate member bench press a card tonight.
So you're welcome to inform.
You're not a man of action.
Well, we'll leave it here for tonight, then. We'll work it out tomorrow night. You get the important chair. That's what matters.
All right then. So...
You need to send the plaque over to...
Oh, yeah, that's right. We need to...
It doesn't...
There's not one that says chair, is there?
It doesn't say it.
Oh, it doesn't say it?
Nope.
Okay.
I figured the color.
So all our names, I see Ms. Williams. Ellen's in front of her. It's Connie.
You just need to switch yours.
Did we switch Connie?
Yeah.
Your moms are going to be very confused as they're watching.
Right?
All right. Now that we have that behind us, can we go forward?
Absolutely.
With an A and R. So the purpose of this plan is to divide Lot B to create parcel E, assesses map Lot Three, assesses map Three, Lot One dash one, and locate it at 16 South Main Street, Bowman's Point, in the residential agricultural zoning disc. Do we have anybody?
Yes, you do.
Mr. Savory, you've already taken.
Yes, I am. I am here. Savory Moore, 12 South Main Street. I was before this board a couple of months ago to create a front and rear lot on my property. And a couple of years ago, I think 2017 or so, the Davidson family created a front and rear lot on their lots, which are the two on the top there. What this is to do is to create that little sliver of land that is going to be transferred in ownership from the Davison's to me to provide me with a little bit more privacy around my dwelling, which is in the upper left-hand corner. And at the same time, I'm working with a deal with the Davison property to extend to them the ownership of the front lot that was created on my property. So basically, this is a land swap.
All right.
With some compensation involved as well. I was recommended that by both the Davison attorney and my attorney that we get this in front of you because both of the, this sliver of property is part of a rear lot for both the giver of the property and the receiver of the property. It is a non-conforming lot, and it will be, I will be, once this is approved, I will be going back to my engineer to get this put in the form of an 81X where that sliver of property just gets absorbed into my lot, and it becomes one lot.
Okay.
All right. So I'm just here to make sure that it's okay with you guys. And, you know, with Mr. Bott's help, I knew that this was an A and R. So...
All right.
That's where I am.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I actually do. Isn't this going to create a Lot B as a non-conforming lot? Isn't Lot B supposed to have three acres in requirement?
So Lot B...
It's a rear lot, correct?
Lot B is an existing lot.
Right, but it's a rear lot.
I think that it's still going to have, I'm seeing, 5.35 acres.
Oh, okay. Yep, that's fine. You know what? I'm looking at the wrong number.
So Lot, new lot, Lot B1, new lot, 5.35 acres.
And that's fine. And then we should note that parcel E is not a buildable lot until it's been assumed by the larger lot.
Right. Well, it'll become a part of Lot C, which is mine already.
Yes. Until that happens, though, it should be noted that it's not a buildable.
Right. And I, what I also did, just to reinforce the non-buildability of this, on this plan, I've indicated wetlands and buffer zones, so it's not even buildable from a conservation standpoint. So...
But it's definitely in the legend. It needs to be combined.
Until it's combined. Once it's combined, it's part of the original lot. But as it stands, a lot is identified as buildable parcel.
No, I understand. I think the purpose of the plan is to delineate that up in the legend.
Right, right. No, I fully understand that. But until it's combined, it's not a buildable lot.
Right.
That doesn't present any issues to include a note that says, "For the purposes of the A and R, those parcels are not considered buildable."
Any further questions from the rest of the board? All right then. I'm looking for a motion to accept this A and R.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R for 16 South Main Street to break it into the two lots.
It should probably be 16 slash 12, because it's going from 16 to 12.
Slash 12 South Main Street.
12 is mine.
I'll second that.
All right then. Mr. Shea and Ms. Sodillo have asked for this to be accepted. So Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
All right. We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Savory.
Let me just finish filling in your little chart here. All right. So I have the Mylar. We'll add the note regarding the non-buildability of those parcels, and we can sign that at the end of the meeting.
Thanks again. Congratulations to the both of you.
Thank you. For anybody in the audience, I'd like everybody to please sign in if they haven't done so already. All right. We have a public hearing continued to adopt a stormwater regulations to supplement general bylaw 9.6, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance by law, in order to comply with the EPA's order for compliance under section 309 of the Clean Water Act. Set fee structure as referred in sections 9.6, 6.1...
Hey, Connor, this is Tom Bott. We are at the hearing.
0.1, 0.8 of the Land Disturbance by law.
My apologies if I may, Mr. Chairman. So we're a very frugal town, and we have one zoom license. So, because the RDA is zooming, we couldn't. So we have Town Council on the phone. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Andy Glynn in Town Council, who have been doing the yeoman's work on the regulations. I'm going to bring up the drafts that we have, but I think likely best that perhaps Andy, you lead that discussion.
Andy Glynn's with Fussin' O'Neill, Town Engineering Consultant. Since the last hearing regarding the draft stormwater regulation, Fussin' O'Neill has reviewed the draft regulation as well as the comments that were added to it from Town Legal Counsel. As part of that, I have marked up a Word file that I've shared with Town Legal Counsel as well as the Town Planner, and essentially weighing in on the Town Council recommendations and some of the items that were discussed by the board at the last hearing. And also, as many of the public and the board will know, there's a lot of other town bylaws and regulations that reference stormwater components, including the Board of Health regulations that are currently in effect. So I also drafted a memo that summarized the current town bylaws and regulations and how they interact, where I know at the current moment, the town isn't looking to reconcile all the town bylaws and subdivision rules and regs. But as Fussin' O'Neill was reviewing stormwater for the town, I thought it was prudent to also review the other documents that may be impacted if this draft stormwater regulation ends up being adopted. So admittedly, I don't believe that the Town Counsel and Town Planner have had much time to review Fussin' O'Neill's draft letter, but I am here tonight to be able to go through any of those aspects to discuss with the board, the public, or Town Counsel as needed. If you'd like, I could run through some of the Cliff Notes on those, or I can have Town Counsel weigh in, I guess, on their end first.
So Connor, if you would introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I want to make sure you can hear me. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is Connor Mullin, Town Counsel, KP Law. I have reviewed, I've going to defer most of the technical components to Andy, but just to, you know, before he kind of jumps in, my understanding from where the last public hearing left off, that the board tonight is going to consider a couple of policy determinations with respect to off-site mitigation. And also, there's a, you know, discussion of the fee schedule. But the, does it mean to, I just wanted to emphasize for the board now.
Is there any way we could put a mic on that?
Uh...
Oh, it's on the mic.
Yeah, like I said, minor technical marvels.
All right.
So I guess, starting with section two on definitions, I essentially, to this draft document that is up on the screen now, added maybe half a dozen definitions that were actually pulled from the current stormwater bylaw in town. And there, specifically, the definition for agriculture, applicant clearing, construction and waste materials, erosion, municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4. And then, that's it for definitions that were added to the original draft. So no real new language there. I just wanted to make sure that the new stormwater regulation included the pertinent definitions that were currently within the town bylaws for stormwater. As Town Counsel mentioned, I also did have highlight the definition of off-site compliance, which I can discuss a little bit later once we get down to that section. Section three, no comments to the draft. Section four, there was a discussion on 4C regarding waivers and whether or not waivers would require a public hearing. And I don't know if Town Counsel wants to weigh in on this, or if the board would like to discuss it further.
This is Connor Mullin, Town Counsel. Again, he, I think you kind of said it right there. I mean, you had commented initially that, you know, whether the public hearing component of, you know, for a waiver, that's ultimately a decision for the board. So that's something the board wants to discuss. But I believe it's, the public hearing for a waiver request is in the current draft. But ultimately, that's up to the board, whether that's something what I include in the final version.
And you noted...
I didn't quite understand what he was saying.
Is there any way we can get that mic closer to the phone, or is that the best we can do?
That's it?
Okay.
So I guess just to reiterate the topic at hand, it's whether or not the planning board would want to require all waiver requests to require a public hearing, which is currently how it's written in the draft stormwater regulation.
And it's also covered under section 5H?
Yeah, so it's elaborated on the process of waivers in section five.
Can I text it on the screen? So any issues with public hearing?
Ms. Gasky?
I don't have an issue with it.
Mr. Shea?
I have, like, well...
It's already required, so I don't have any issues. Ms. Sodillo?
It's fine.
And Ms. Williams.
All right. As moving down to section six on fees, the current fee amounts, they're outlined here, as I understand, were from Northampton, Massachusetts. And the board requested some other fee structures for the region. I'm not sure if we have those. I guess...
We do not.
So I...
Yeah, that was my homework, and I just haven't had a chance to get to it.
So what would we like to have? Maybe Middleborough, Plymouth?
Well, as I talked before, I'm sort of selective in the folks I look at to model our things off of. Proximity, your neighbor, isn't always, there's benefits to modeling things after your neighbor, but there's benefits to modeling things after people who really get it and sort it out. No offense to our viewers from Middleborough. But we'll look at some of those other fee structures.
Okay. So you're going to assure us that you're going to do it very similar to that structure?
Yeah. We'll look at what other folks have done.
All right. So we can at least get maybe three?
Yep. So we'll look at those. And I think, Council, our deadline is the end of June from EPA?
I believe so. I'll double-check that right now, but that...
But I certainly want to, I certainly want to get this wrapped up at our next meeting.
Which is in two weeks.
And still on section six with fees, Fussin' O'Neill did discuss and recommend that there be a clear exemption for any projects that are already going to be under review as a site plan review, special permit, preliminary plan, or definitive plan, and have the review fee be under those existing fees for those planning board applications in lieu of additional fee for, specifically for MS4 projects that are proposing connecting to the municipal separate storm sewer system. So currently, Fussin' O'Neill is the town's consultant, reviews stormwater designs and compliance with town regs as well as state regs during those other review processes. So currently, it's, I didn't see an exemption in there, so I just wanted to reiterate again. I would like to see that as a clear exemption on the section six.
I would, I would agree with that. And no double fees either. Right? We want to make sure that doesn't happen at all.
Yes, that's another good point. So there might be, basically, the applicant should pay the fee for the most appropriate section under the fee table, not all sections that could be applicable.
So some of that affects exemptions from fee schedule for projects under site plan or subdivision review?
Might want to throw a jay in there instead of that k.
Yeah, I'm not a very good typist. On my list of things, I'm not very good at. It's quite a list.
All right then. Ms. Gasky.
No problem with it.
Right. And again, I want to make sure that they don't get charged if they're charged for these fees under another...
Yeah, and essentially, the two things that we look at are site plans and subdivision when we're doing these reviews. So if someone has a special permit, there's not, there's typically a site plan that goes with that. They're constructing something, if they're doing a special permit to open a donut shop and a coffee shop, that's not site plan review because they're not building anything. So if any place they're building something, site plan or subdivision, we'd be doing those stormwater reviews.
So we can note Mr. Shea's concern. We don't have to put it on paper, but our notes and the record will follow up with that?
No, right now.
Okay.
The fees are as follows. There's exemption from the fee schedule for projects that are a site plan or subdivision review, which is what I just put on the screen. And I think that covers it, right?
As long as Mr. Shea's concern is noted. All right then. Ms. Sodillo?
Are you okay with it?
And Ms. Williams. All right.
Moving down to section seven on the actual permit applications. I understand the board agreed to leave in Part C regarding tree protection and preservation in existing trees. So no changes to the draft language there.
Big C. There's a lot of Cs.
Yeah.
Here we are. That C, right?
Correct.
So, Mr. Bott?
Sure.
So let's say that we have a project in town, and there's going to be a significant amount of clearing of trees. Are we going to be able to allow a condition for replanting trees somewhere else, or are we still bound to just asking for that as, you know, good gesture?
Well, we can...
Because if we can put that in language, I personally would like to see what the rest of the board feels as far as that's concerned.
I believe it's stated under section one.
Yeah, so if we scroll down, there is a, currently a section pertaining to that in the draft version. C right there, replanting of trees based on the caliper, that the trees removed. So I'd encourage the board to take a closer look at this section in general. There's a lot of text there. But at the moment, Fussin' O'Neill doesn't have any comments or revisions to the draft version of this section.
I believe to your point, it says, "The collection of financial contributions to support the town's tree planting and maintenance efforts are public purposes that protect public health, welfare, and environment and the stuff."
So the language still would mean, would be asking for a contribution, and we couldn't condition it?
Well, if these are in our regulations, we can condition it.
Okay.
And where you have a shall, no less than one and a half inches of the new tree shall be, so shall be replanted. Shall means not an option.
All right.
And the board can waive things, but the applicant doesn't have the option to say, "I prefer not to."
Thank you. All right. Ms. Gasky.
I'm going to need a little bit more time looking at this to make a decision on that.
I'm fine with it. I have no further questions.
Ms. Sodillo?
Working our way down in the same section, Part F, on performance standards for redevelopment of off-site mitigation. There. So there is a definition for off-site mitigation in section two. This outlines when off-site mitigation may be allowed, but it... but it does condition it in the draft stormwater regs on when it may be allowed, and then also ultimately up to the planning board to make those determinations. So during the previous meeting, Fossett O'Neill recommended leaving this option in the stormwater regs, but understands the planning board's concerns on it not wanting to be a regularly occurring component of a applicant's proposal. I think here, where it restricts the location to the same watershed as the projects being installed, and then also clarifies that it would only be allowed for redevelopment projects, not any greenfield development project, gives the, the board some reasons to deny an applicant's request for off-site mitigation. But as I stated during the last planning board meeting, I think there may be instances in town where it may be more beneficial to the town overall to allow off-site mitigation where it may, the town may want a developer to treat stormwater closer to a discharge point for a water body that would provide more benefit to the water quality treatment of that water body as opposed to on the site location itself, where the developer may be proposing site improvements. So again, I encourage the board to read through this section more thoroughly, and there may be some other conditions that the board may wanna add to restrict when off-site mitigation could be utilized, but I wouldn't completely strike it out of the, the stormwater regulation.
Is, I didn't notice, is there a statement that requires the long-term maintenance and upkeep?
Yes, and I'll need a minute to find it in here, but it is... So section nine outlines operation and maintenance, and there's also a statement in the current regulation that requires any developer to maintain any proposed stormwater management components until they're accepted by the town. So basically, that covers any conditions during construction until the applicant has met all conditions of approval for their project.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. I don't have any further questions, and honestly, we just approved, or I'm not sure if we've signed off on it yet, a very similar project last meeting that had off-site mitigation, so.
Mr. Gasky.
Again, I would, I wanna read a little bit better and see what, and see how these things are included.
Ms. Adillo? Okay, and Ms. Williams?
It's fine with me.
All right.
Continuing down to part G, under design standards, the main component here is the, is part nine, oh, up. Looking at two screens. Go up to... I guess back to the prior section, we jumped down to operation and maintenance, so, no, sorry. No, still one more section up. I wanna get to, still some comments in section seven. Of course, I didn't, you know, page numbers here. Yes, if you stop there, so we went through the trees, come down. Continue down, no comments there. So part G, stormwater design standards, number nine, there pertaining to the 24-hour rainfall data. This is where currently the town refers to a board health regulation, which utilizes Cornell Atlas rainfall events. And Fossett O'Neill's recommending revising that to refer to the NOAA Atlas 14, is what it's commonly referred to, precipitation data. So it's something that MassDEP is still reviewing, but it is an accepted resource in the industry, and it will continue to be updated by the federal government, where some of the prior references, not just in Carver, but other municipalities, have become outdated. And this would be a situation where the town would need to worry about updating their stormwater regulation to reference a new data set. The data set itself would be updated through NOAA. So the recommendation here is to use the NOAA Atlas and use Town Hall as the point of reference instead of using individual properties, which the NOAA Atlas will allow you to do, actually type in the address for the proposed project. But I think for consistency and ease of review by the town, it makes sense to utilize a fixed point in town, at Town Hall, where the rainfall intensities across the town won't vary drastically enough to warrant, you know, going by each individual site address in town. So that's what's outlined here under part nine.
Well, that clearly has to be a win-win, because I mean, with NOAA and the 40-day rainfall, he had it taken care of, so that works for me.
It's a different NOAA.
I know, but ironically, the only thing that's different is the age. And I mean, this guy was good to go for 40 days of rain, so that works for me. Mr. Gasky, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Shea.
I'm glad to see it consolidated into the single NOAA calculations rather than we've been working with several different calculations up to this point.
Ms. Adillo?
Looks good.
And Ms. Williams.
And you'll see that reference in a decision we'll be talking about later on, Cornell, NOAA.
Twelve and thirteen, I, the draft version included some limitations on flow velocities within storm drain pipes, as well as swales, recommending removing those velocity restrictions, where I believe it would create an instance where an applicant may need to come in for a waiver if their flow velocities were outside of those windows, where there is, can be any number of reasons why a flow velocity outside those ranges would be appropriate for pipes and swales, where there's different ways to stabilize the swales, and there's different sizing and modeling criteria for different pipes, for different uses. So essentially, the storm event for what those are sized for and how much water would be conveyed, that would be tied to the NOAA rainfall data. But flow velocities, I personally, I recommend that not limiting those too strictly in the stormwater regulation, where it'd still be something the town and their consultant would be able to review as part of the overall stormwater design, but I wouldn't want it to commonly trip waiver specifically for flow velocities. So that's under twelve and thirteen.
So my question to that is, so it's a 20, 25-year storm opposed to 100-year?
Correct, so the stormwater basins and, or stormwater treatment practices are commonly sized for a 100-year rainfall event, but the conveyance systems, whether it be the swales or the storm drainage pipe network, is commonly sized for a 25-year storm event, so less rainfall. But the developer and their design engineer need to show that the stormwater will ultimately end up at the design point. So for example, there might be a situation where a catch basin grate in a parking lot can't accommodate a 100-year storm event, but water may bypass that one catch basin grate, flow down gradient to another catch basin or into the basin itself, and still end up at the design point of the stormwater system, but that water may not be able to get in to that specific catch basin grate or that pipe that connects the storm drain network within that parking lot. So it's, you know, 25...
Because of the restriction of the pipe?
Correct.
So it may take longer to get there, but when it gets to where it's going, it's got a place to stay for the time being.
Right. Mr. Gasky.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yep, fine.
Makes sense, yeah.
All right.
And I guess, oh, sorry, fourteen, I did increase, or recommend increasing the storm event for culverts to the 100-year design storm from the, I believe the draft version had a 50-year storm event, and I specifically am recommending using the terminology "design storm" as opposed to "storm event", which commonly refers to rainfall storm events, where a culvert would be typically conveying flow under a roadway for a stream, or sometimes a river, and the impacts of a rainfall storm event versus a flooding event are different, based on different soil conditions. So I guess this section refers to the Massachusetts Stream Crossing Handbook, which has requirements on culverts, and just a, I don't know, I guess... It's a, I think, an important distinction to make the difference between a culvert and a storm drain pipe, even though a pipe may actually be used as a culvert. So that was the, the main tweak to section 14 there.
So is that something that we wanna specify in the definitions as well, or...?
I, yeah, I can, I can revisit section two to define that more clearly. We, I guess the reference to the stream crossing standards helps, but as we all know, and reviewed older regulations that leave too much room for interpretation, it'd be good for us to clarify it now while we have the chance.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No questions from you?
All right.
General comment throughout, replacing Public Works with Operation Maintenance Department to be consistent with town departments. I didn't have any recommended changes to section eight pertaining to erosion and sediment control. They all seemed applicable and appropriate. But again, encourage the planning board to read through that section if you haven't already. So into the operation and maintenance section. It's part six, yeah, there. Six A, regarding annual filing fee. I think that should be, Fossett O'Neill recommends having an annual fee for stormwater components that are ultimately tied into the municipal stormwater system, but that fee amount should be tied to the fee table and part of the review on appropriate fee amounts based on other comparable municipalities. So that section may need to be refined to coordinate with section six for fees. And that's the last section that Fossett O'Neill had comments on in the, the draft version, the stormwater regulation.
Thank you. Mr. Gasky, I'd like to go back to your replanting and relocating. How did you feel about that? You need more time to go over that?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
I wanna read the whole thing.
All right. I know, Mr. Bott, you wanted to try to move this forward, but is it all right to give...
No, absolutely, we've got a hear...
Give it time to read that over?
Yeah, we've got a hearing in place, we've got, we can invite the public for any of their comments about this as well.
Connie wanted me to read the public hearing notice?
But I just, a quick question, I noticed we didn't cover the cold water fisheries in here. I know there's none in town.
After the discussion at the prior planning board meeting, I did strike that out, and I guess that's why I didn't have it in... But it was my understanding that the board didn't wanna have erroneous...
I didn't think it was necessary if we don't have any cold water fisheries in town.
Right.
Thank you. So in order to do things right, Mr. Bott, should I read the notice where we did the exchanging of positions? Or are we all right to go forward and open it up to the public?
We can read the hearing notice if you want.
Very well. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 23, 2024, at 7:00 PM in Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One. Do adopt stormwater regulations to supplement General Bylaw 9.6, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw in order to comply with the EPA's order for compliance under section 309 of the Clean Water Act. The board will also set a fee structure as referred in sections 9.6, .6, .F, .1, .H of the Land Disturbance Bylaw. A copy of the draft regulations prepared by Town Council are in file at the office of the Town Clerk, the Preventing Office, and on the town's website at https://www.cavermass.gov/planningboard. Pages, Draft Stormwater Regulations. Boy, that's quite the long site. So at this time, we open it up to the public.
Looks like they're all in agreement.
All right then. So we table this to give Mr. Gasky the opportunity to read this.
And we've got a couple tweaks on the fees as well. So the planning board's next meeting is May 28, day after Memorial Day.
I'd like to accept the motion to continue that hearing to May 28.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Ms. Adillo and Mr. Shea second it. All right, moving on. Oh, thank you, thank you.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Adillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Thank you, Mr. Gasky.
Sure.
All right, so we are on the application of bridge stone development. Now, do you have public hearing notices, or you gave that to me, right? Well, we only had the one.
It should be in the file, but...
Is it all right to read the one off, Mr. Bott, that was given to me? Not, you know?
Yes.
It'll be fine, all right.
It should be the same, Chris.
Mr. Chair, this is...
On the application of...
One moment, please, we totally forgot Town Council's on, hi Connie, sorry about that, man.
No, that's right, I was just gonna thank the chair and the board for having me, and I was gonna jump off unless they're, you know, the board would like us to hang on to address any of the other matters. But otherwise, just wanted to say thank you to the board again, and have a nice evening.
Hi Connie, thank you much, sir, good night.
Bye.
All right then. Thank you. On the application of Bridge Stone Development Incorporated requesting... On the application of Bridgestone Development Incorporated requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Section 2230(c), 3100, 4341, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number Four, Ricketts Pond Drive in Carver, Mass., the Sessos Map 32, Lot 1-4, and the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. The lot will be comprised of a 7,494-square-foot commercial building with associated driveway, parking area, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Stormwater from the site development will be directed to an infiltration basin that was designed to accommodate runoff from the Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision.
Excuse me, Mr. Shea. In the event to avoid any possible conflict or potential conflict of interest, I'd like to recuse myself from this matter, and I will sit down.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to the new members of the Board and the new appointments.
Thank you.
I think the last time, my name is Bob Ferguson. I'm an attorney at Hinckley Allen.
Point of order?
Yes.
Sorry. If Ms. Williams is going to recuse herself, she needs to leave the room?
Mr. Bott?
No, she's in the audience.
No, she's not.
Easy. Excuse me. It's best practice is to leave the room if there's no requirement.
So, it's not to unduly influence the Board?
Okay, but if there's no requirement, I'm not going to ask her to leave the room.
It's not unusual for someone who's stepping away from the Board to leave the room.
There's no requirement, correct?
It's up to the discretion of that person who's recusing herself.
Okay. Are you comfortable being in the audience, or would you like to go outside?
If you want me to step out, I will, but.
I'm leaving it up to you. I'm fine, as long as it's not a requirement, and thank you. All right then, now we'll move on.
Good evening. My name is Bob Ferguson. I'm an attorney at Hinckley Allen at 28th State Street in Boston. I represent Mike Ficini, who you see in the front row over here, at Bridgestone Development Inc., the applicant with respect to Lot Four. With me as well is the owner of the property, RPVP LLC, Principal Peter O'Pacinsky, as well Brad McKenzie in the second row on the aisle seat, and his colleague Eric Shoemaker, both of McKenzie Engineering, both professional engineers. It seems that it was around this time last year that I was before the Board with respect to a application for a special permit with respect to Lot Three. And at that time, we certainly appreciated the comments received by the planning board, and I would hope that the planning board recalled that we made efforts to revise the plans with respect to Lot Three in connection with that special permit application. There was no opposition to that application. It was approved, if I recall unanimously, and it was not appealed. The reason why I raise that is that with respect to Lot Four, Bridgestone has done much the same thing. I think Bridgestone has been receptive to any questions or concerns that the Board may have had. And my understanding is that the Board has noted the fact that this is a well-thought-out design, that Bridgestone and its design team has done a good job with respect to the design, really a bang-up job, if you will. And so, in this hearing, to the extent, we believe we've addressed any concerns or questions that the Board may have, but to the extent that the Board had any further questions or concerns, we were just asked that the Board make those known to us so that we could continue to cooperate and address them in due course. That having been said, there are a couple things that I wanted to point out before I turn it over to the team to make themselves available to answer any other questions. And that's two things. I understand that some public comments have been submitted to the Board. I believe one had to do with a vacuum hose, if you will, for lack of a better term, not with respect to Lot Three, but at the subdivision in connection with one of the infiltration basins. I understand that Mr. O'Pacinsky, who's here tonight, also submitted comments to the Board addressing that, and I'm not aware of any further questions or concerns that the Board might have with respect to that issue. To the extent the Board does, we're happy to answer them. That's one. Two, it came to my attention that by a letter dated May 9th, although I'm not sure if it was submitted on May 9th, Attorney Meg Sheehan had submitted roughly a ninety-seven-page, thereabouts, document in connection with Lot Four. Again, there was no opposition to Lot Three. This submission largely relates to Lot Three, and it references a pending litigation before the Mass. Department of Environmental Protection, the Office of Alternative Dispute Resolution. I'd like to make it known and let it be clear to the Board that that is an active appeal that we are disputing. It has to do with a superseding order of conditions that Mass. DEP issued approving the Lot Three project, and Mass. DEP continues to support that decision in the appeal. It also references another piece of litigation in the Superior Court. That is a piece of litigation that, again, does not relate specifically to the issues before the Board tonight. It has to do with a requested enforcement order and the Carver Conservation Commission. I would point out, and it is a matter of public record, that in that case, the owner of the property was not originally named in the complaint. The owner of the property was subsequently named in the complaint but never served. That litigation has therefore not gone anywhere in the two or three years that it has been filed. And in fact, the attorney in that litigation recently, after the court determined that there was, the case was not ripe for a pretrial conference because the complaint had not yet been served, service of process had not yet been made on the owner of the property, the court indicated that it would postpone a pretrial conference because it was not ripe. The attorney in that case represented to the court that the case, although nothing has changed, that the case is now ripe for a pretrial conference. So, any suggestion that that is an active litigation, those papers have not even served on my client. Okay, so, again, not really relevant to Lot Four and the issues before the Board tonight, but I'm concerned that when you get a hundred-page submission, that there is a serious risk of confusion. And I appreciate that the Board is able to take public comment, and the Board is well-equipped to determine the weight that it should apply to the comments that it receives. And I would suggest to the Board that no weight be granted to the one-hundred-page application or submission that was submitted to the Board for several reasons. My team is here and is available to address all of the issues on the merits, but I suggest we don't need to go that far. On page one, there's a reference to the testimony of Gary James, and it's referenced that he's a professional engineer. As a matter of public record, I've become aware that Mr. James's license has been suspended by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and this is a matter of public record, I actually have it on my computer now. The information available to me indicates that there was probation, suspension, and a fine. Further details, I really don't have firsthand knowledge of, but I would suggest that a submission based on what's being represented as a professional engineer in connection with a matter that has nothing to do with Lot Four but relates to Lot Three, which was not appealed, was approved unanimously by this Board, really has no weight and should be granted no weight in this particular proceeding. I would suggest that this proceeding relates to the application for a special permit on Lot Four, and the team has demonstrated, you know, chapter and verse, every aspect of the bylaws that have been met with respect to this special permit application. I would further add that Mr. Glions from Fussin' O'Neill, my understanding him and his firm have weighed in on the application as well, and I'm aware of no concerns that Fussin' O'Neill have raised with respect to the special permit application. Certainly understand that a member of the Board has recused herself, and so, my understanding is that there are with an alternate member of the Board, five voting members. And certainly, at the end, I would ask that the Board, on behalf of the applicant Bridgestone, vote to approve the special permit application, as there is no valid basis to deny the special permit application that I am aware of. To the extent the Board believes that there may be or has any question or concern along those lines, I would request an opportunity to respond. So, without further ado, I would turn it over to Eric Shoemaker.
Eric Shoemaker, McKenzie Engineering Group. Believe we last met on April 23rd, and we left the meeting by scheduling a site walk, and Mr. Glions with Fussin' O'Neill was going to take a second look at the design of the drainage system. Since then, we received a peer review letter from Fussin' O'Neill. My interpretation is it's mostly recommendations for waivers and conditions in support of our design. Since then, we had the site walk, and I did not attend, but I discussed it with Mr. Ficini, and I did not think there was any outstanding issues or comments that arose from the site walk. So, with that, we can answer any questions that the Board may have, any outstanding issues?
Sure, but before I turn it over to the Board members, Mr. Glions, do you have anything to add to that?
Andy Glions with Fussin' O'Neill. We issued our last memo dated April 24th, 2024. It does include various comments and recommendations regarding waiver requests the applicant had, as well as some recommended conditions of approval, the majority of which, if not all, are consistent with other waiver requests and conditions that have been before the Board before. I did take a in-depth look at some of the public comment information that was submitted to the Town as well as the planning board, and I guess specifically did add a statement regarding pre-development stormwater conditions, and one of the public comments that I received pertained to how those pre-development cover conditions would impact the stormwater runoff from the site during pre-development conditions. So, I addressed that comment under eleven, Part E, in my latest memo in April. Basically, came to the determination that the existing conditions of the project were accurately represented by the applicant for the definitive subdivision as well as the prior site plan and special permit applications for the project. I can certainly elaborate and go into more detail on the technical aspects of that if needed, but really, that was kind of the more notable change to the review memo since the original review memo that was issued for this project, because those public comments became available between the first memo and the second.
Thank you for your thoroughness on that. I'm going to ask Mr. Gasky and the remaining members of the Board if they have any concerns or questions at this time.
No, I do not have any questions.
Thank you.
No, not at the moment.
I think everything was well put. It was explained well, and now I understand it much better.
All right, at this time, Mr. Bott, am I to open it up for any public?
Absolutely.
Comment? So, gentlemen, if you would, me, I'm going to allow the comments for the sake of people making their piece, and then I think what we'll do is we'll vote on the fact that this has nothing to do with your lot, the concerns from Lot, that are at Lot Three.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that, and to the extent any rebuttal from us is needed or any explanation for anything that's popped up, you know, in the last couple of days.
Yep, no, I think it's fair to open it up to anybody that might have a comment. Do I have any letters that need to be read?
Well, there's some comments from Peter O'Pacinsky, but I see he's in the audience, so he can.
He'll have his opportunity to talk.
As he would like.
Okay.
There is a presentation from the folks from Pine Barrens as well, and they sent me a presentation, and I'm ready to put it on the screen whenever they'd like to make their comments as well.
Okay. All right then. Opening it up to anybody that'd like to come forward.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You too, Mayor. I want to talk for a moment about integrity and character, and I was watching a zoning board of appeals meeting the other night. Chairman Gray had before him Larry Hale, and Stephen said, "There are two kinds of conflicts of interest. The obvious one, where there's money involved. Then there's the appearance of a conflict of interest." And I've known Stephen Gray, I served on the ZBA, I think he's got a tremendous amount of character and integrity. And he said, because he was working with Larry Hale on a completely different project that had nothing to do with what was before the ZBA, nonetheless, he was going to recuse himself, and he turned the meeting over to his vice chairman and made the comment, "I'll be sitting right over there." That's why I said they don't have to leave the room. So, that's a point of information. I wish I could say the same for everybody that sits on this board. And for that, I'd like to read something very short.
This does have to do with?
Yes, it absolutely does, has to do with SLT and this lot. SLT Construction Mining Site is violating State Wetlands Protection Act, does not protect Ricketts Pond drinking water from pollution. After leveling the hill, extracting around $10 million in sand and gravel, now SLT is installing commercial buildings, which they are not, because they're not building anything. Groups say the company does not have the adequate plan to protect our water from pollution. So, why am I reading this? This was posted from Carver Concerned Citizens, references Save the Pine Barrens and the Land and Water Coalition. Carver Concerned Citizens has one of its prominent members, Mr. Gasky's wife. If that is not a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest, I don't know what is.
Okay.
So, in my estimation, Mr. Gasky should also recuse himself from anything to do with this state, because he made a public comment two years ago that he was not on this board when this subdivision was approved, and quote, "I don't like it."
Okay, I don't want this to be an attack on.
No, that's not an attack, it's a point of order.
You've made your point.
And if he had integrity and character, he wouldn't be sitting there with anything to do with Spring Street.
That's enough.
I've asked him to.
I have a right to say what I want to say.
Sit down.
I have a right to say anything I want to say.
Mr. Jermaine, please.
And there's nothing you can do about it.
Mr. Jermaine, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room. I do not, I do not want that in my room.
There's nothing you can do.
Can you please stop? Thank you.
I'll see you at Jermaine.
I'd like to ask everybody to excuse that, and I don't know why we have to address things like that. So, Mr. Gasky, I'm sorry. I thought that was an attack on you. Apologize that that had to happen. I did ask him to leave the room.
Appreciate it.
If you are comfortable sitting here and remaining, I'm okay with that. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Can you sign in on that sheet, please?
Sure.
My name is Meg Sheehan. I'm an environmental attorney. I'm here representing Community Land and Water Coalition. We are a nonprofit group that works in southeastern Mass. to protect our land and waters. We have members in Carver who live, work, and recreate here. We're making these comments on behalf of ourselves and on behalf of our members who live in this town. Some of our members are butters to Lot Four and to the Ricketts Pond subdivision. We did send you a lengthy document, and it relates directly to your agenda here, because as noted on my slide number two, your agenda states that the stormwater from the Lot Four site development will be directed to an infiltration basin that was designed to accommodate the Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision. We have concerns with this, and yes, we are in an administrative hearing on Lot Three. I would like to address what Mr. Ferguson said earlier, was that the Board approved Lot Three. Actually, the Board denied Lot Three, and the case went to land court and was then settled, and some of the items were moved out of the wetlands area. So, that's an ongoing administrative hearing that relates to the stormwater that the system that was designed to address the stormwater for the entire Ricketts Pond subdivision, including the Lot Four, that is before you know. Our letter of. Our letter of April 23 addressed some of these concerns, and our comment letter on May 5 identified five violations of the stormwater system that is going to be serving this lot, Lot 4. So as we stated in our letter, the stormwater system for Lot 4 is underdesigned, and I will go over some of the reasons why it is.
You've submitted this, right?
Yes, but I'm just going.
I don't know that we need to go over it again. But if you are going to go over it, can you do it in a way that we can move this along? Because I, they have been held up, and I don't want to see them held up anymore. Because, again, what I really want to address is moving forward and making sure that this has nothing to do with Lot 3.
I'm not saying that it has anything to do with Lot 3. I'm saying that it has everything to do with the stormwater system that Lot 4 is using. And if you have already made up your mind, then maybe I'm wasting.
I haven't already made up my mind.
Okay.
It's just that we seem to keep coming back to this. And what I would like to hear is it to be moved on, for you to explain it, and for us to, you know, be able to make our decision.
Well, that's what I'm doing, and I appreciate the chance to do that.
All right.
So the first violation was the use of the infiltration basins and direct violation of the stormwater system. And this is the infiltration basin that Lot 4 is going to put its stormwater into. I'd like to first put up my second slide, which shows that this project is approximately 30 to 40 acres right now, and the stormwater system that Lot 4 is going to use was originally designed for 20 acres. So that system does not take into account the expansion onto the Mariblot next door and the mining that is occurring in Plimpton. So you see the lot there, and you see the two stormwater basins. Now, this goes to our first violation, which is the next slide. This, these are the stormwater basins that Lot 4 is going to use. And this describes what an infiltration basin is. This is directly from the law, and this is the basin that Lot 4 is going to use. It's supposed to be a post-construction stormwater management system. It is not supposed to be used during construction. That is stated in the next slide directly there. Never use infiltration basins as a temporary sediment trap for construction activities. Our documents show that Ricketts Pond Business Park, SLT, the business park, is using those infiltration basins during construction. That violates the law. So this is a proposal to add stormwater to infiltration basins that are being used in violation of the law. Next is the phasing of the project. They are asking you to rely on an order of conditions that delineated the wetlands and set up the stormwater system in 2019. That order of conditions is expired. It was for the 20 acres. They have expanded, as I stated, onto the adjacent lot and not provided for the stormwater. And that is directly in violation of the stormwater standards, Chapter 1, Page 3. It has to address all phases. It does not. I've already addressed the next slide. The Lot 4 project relies on an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission that is expired. So you will be approving, if you approve this, a project based on an expired wetlands permit. Again, the testimony of Mr. James summarized here. A stormwater system is underdesigned, won't handle the stormwater, resulting in harm to the interests of the wetlands laws, including, that's the next slide. Keep going. There you go. And Mr. James is a professional engineer. What Mr. Ferguson relied to was a technical administrative oversight with his license. He has been practicing professional engineering in southeastern Massachusetts for over 40 years. You can look at his resume. He works for beta engineering and has designed hundreds of stormwater systems and works for municipalities and private companies. This is.
This is a gentleman whose license is in, is presently not.
For a technical administrative reason.
Okay.
And as I said, he has 40 years' experience doing stormwater systems.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
In summary, to summarize, we suggest that this should be denied, because the stormwater system is not properly designed, and it's not being operated in accordance with the stormwater system. And as one of our violations, one of the five violations that we listed in our attachment, is that there are no operation and maintenance plans. A crux, the crux of stormwater management plans is operation and maintenance. The federal government, the Clean Water Act, you are here amending your stormwater standards in order to come into compliance with federal law. That federal law requires a SWIP, it's called. I don't know where the SWIP is. It requires inspection and monitoring reports. Your own bylaw requires them all to be filed with the town. Who isn't doing the inspections, and where are the reports? I don't see how anyone could say that the system is in compliance and that you can add more water into it from another lot. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, can you speak of the violations from your personal profession?
Andy Lyons with Fussin O'Neil. I'd like to give the applicant a chance to, I guess, respond to the public comment first, and then I can weigh in based on their responses, if that's okay with the chair.
That would be perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Sheehan.
If I may have a chance to rebut, just a minute, if possible, if I find something to rebut. After the applicant speaks, if I may have the opportunity to, for a short rebuttal, if necessary.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you again to the members of the board.
Let me just make, there was nobody else that wanted to come forward?
I think Peter and Brad. I'm going to turn it over. I just wanted to address, if I may.
All right. Sure. I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Appreciate that. A couple of things during the presentation, this is the first I've seen the presentation, but I believe there was a recitation that development of the subdivision was 30 or 40 acres. I would suggest that I think that that math includes properties not owned by my client and property that is also not within the town of Carver. So I would take issue with the calculation of the number of acres. I also would add that there was a reference to 2019 order of conditions. That's a reference to the order of conditions pursuant to which the stormwater management system, roadway drainage structures, including the infiltration basins, were constructed. That was, that was not appealed and became a final order of conditions that was subsequently incorporated into various town approvals and documents. So again, I just wanted to correct the record. With respect to Mr. James, and that's why I'm going to turn it over, because there are lots of things that are raised in here. You know, Ms. Sheehan says that, you know, it's stormwater, and therefore the board has jurisdiction and all that. I would suggest that I do not believe that Ms. Sheehan included a brief that she filed with Mass. DEP in which she said, this is a paper that she signed, says the planning board, that's a reference to the Town of Carver Planning Board, has no jurisdiction under the act. That's a reference to the Wetlands Protection Act or regulations. I believe that's a reference to the Wetlands Protection Act regulations. If you read her brief in full, what she's saying is she believes that the planning board has no jurisdiction. So it's a little bit of both here. She's saying, oh, this relates to Lot 4, but she's raising SWIP and order of conditions that was issued by the CONCOM and was not appealed. It was a final order of conditions. So I wanted to point that out. And then lastly, briefly, with respect to Mr. James' testimony, she mentioned that there was a technical administrative issue with his license. I'm not aware of that, because I don't believe that's a matter of public record. That suggests to me that Ms. Sheehan had knowledge of the issue with Mr. James' license. And if that's so, I do not believe that was disclosed to the planning board prior to this moment just now. To me, that's something that I think the planning board would want to know.
Okay.
So with that, I would turn it over to Eric. I believe Peter can talk about the infiltration basins and the sedimentation, the temporary sedimentation basins that were constructed on-site. I'm sure they can speak to the fact that the basins are draining within 72 hours. No evidence has been proffered to suggest otherwise. And I think Mike has observed the fact that there is no 72-plus-hour failure to drain in the infiltration basin. So maybe Eric, I don't know if he'll start with it, but this system, when it was originally designed and conceived, was designed to accommodate an entire subdivision. It was overdesigned. So this isn't a matter of, oh, we're now adding a lot on top of the existing system. We're now just going for the special permit on this particular lot, which was already accounted for and calculated in the documents, the stormwater management reports and submissions made by McKenzie Engineering. So with that, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Eric Shoemaker, McKenzie Engineering Group. I'd just like to reiterate that during the design of the definitive subdivision plan, we overdesigned the impervious coverage of the subdivision. We purposely didn't add any landscape buffers in the side property lines or the front of the lots. By doing that, we took an extremely conservative approach to the drainage design, and we've been recalculating the impervious coverage, which has been less for each lot in the subdivision, and updating the drainage report as we apply these lots in front of the board. I'd also like to add a point of clarification for the initial comment by Ms. Sheehan that stated that the agenda stated the Lot 4 would access the entire drainage system of the subdivision. Lot 4 only drains into basin number two, which is on the eastern side of the, of the definitive subdivision. The western side actually includes an overflow pipe, and that basin flows downhill. It has an overflow that would flow downhill into the eastern basin. So we're completely separated from infiltration basin number one across the street. I know many of her issues involve that basin. During the definitive subdivision process, we submitted a SWIP about 500 pages long that was sent to Mr. Opochinski. I believe I forwarded it to the town, and Mr. Opochinski has been keeping it in the construction trailer. I'd also like to add a comment on the overestimation of the lot area of the subdivision. The Marib parcel isn't owned by the applicant. It's not part of the subdivision. It's, it's not tied into our drainage, because it's a neighboring lot. And lastly, in that SWIP, there was an erosion and sedimentation control plan that showed temporary sedimentation basins for the development. It's my understanding Mr. Opochinski has installed those throughout the whole process in order to mitigate the sediment getting into the basins. So with that, I'll pass it off to Mr. Opochinski. Thank you.
Eric, did you sign in? Thanks. Thank you. And Peter, you signed in?
I'll sign in. So this is a Google map of what the site looked like in 2022.
If you could step on back, please, Mr. Opochinski. I'm sure we can all see it from the podium.
So you see?
Mr. Opochinski, if you could just stand by the podium, please.
By the podium, you can see it all right?
I could, think we can all see it from there.
So this is the site here. This is Spring Street here. We had the road about half paved in 2022. And the cul-de-sac that we were eventually going to construct was kind of the high point of the property. So everything kind of sheet drained towards Spring Street. So what we did was direct the water to a temporary basin here, 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 and another one down in here. There was like four of them on that one side of the road. I think back in the machine's reports, they had actually accused us of penetrating the groundwater, which was probably 20 feet or more. These things were specifically to catch stormwater runoff. During the construction of Lot 1, I think there was a couple of torrential rainstorms where the catch basins at the whole point became inundated with runoff, and the banks kind of over, there was probably a couple of feet of water in the roadway. Those banks overflowed into the sediment basin, the retention basins, and caused some silting. So when Mike Fuccini finished on Lot 1, what we did, what we typically do when we build a subdivision, ultimately, you're going to get some amount of sedimentation from stormpipes and runoff and rain events. So we generally leave the ponds about a foot high. We go in, we take a sacrificial layer out of the ponds, put in brand-new sand. And since we did that on this basin right here, behind Mike's first building, pond doesn't hold any water at all. It rains, and it's gone within a matter of hours. On this side, we saw the suction line. We were trying to get the water out the spring, and our crew just happened to be pumping there. We were trying to get it dry enough where we could go out and remove the layer. There's probably a layer of sedimentation, a couple inches thick. So we go in, we take that sacrificial layer out and put in new sand. This pond, even with the sediment that's accumulated in there over the last four years, we never even, we have not cleaned it yet. There's an overflow pipe to this basin over here. It's never overflowed or even come close to overflowing. And furthermore, we also have an emergency spillway on this side of the pond that falls towards Ricketts Pond or this area over here, and we've never come close to overflowing that pond. You can, if you look at the roof wrap spillway, that's there for an emergency case only. There's not an ounce of sediment in it. It's clean as the day we put it in. Ms. Sheehan also represented that we were draining the entire 40 acres that we own here this way. At the town line between Carver and Plimpton is the high point. From the Carver-Plimpton town line, the land slopes into Plimpton. It doesn't slope that this way. So Plimpton, when that's developed, will have its own drainage system. It has nothing to do with this drainage system.
Okay. I have two questions. How deep are those tanks?
The temps?
Yeah.
They were probably four or five feet at the time.
Okay.
I dug most of it myself.
All right. And then when you skimmed those off, was the sand that you used from your site, or did you have to bring it in?
Oh, no.
Special sand?
We had, we had $10 million worth of sand there.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else from the public? Do you feel comfortable speaking now, Mr. Lyons?
If Ms. Sheehan wants to address again, I can go last, I guess. That way I make sure I address everything.
I also want to ask my other members of the board.
Yeah, I can weigh in now if you'd like.
You know, their concerns and questions regarding it. So, all right, then. Well, I think you guys should speak before we allow Mr. Lyons to come back up.
I think Andy Lyons covered it all in his.
Okay. Mr. Gasky?
I'm good for right now.
Hello.
I think it was explained quite well.
All right, then. Attorney Sheehan?
Just a couple points. You know, Mr. Ferguson did not deny.
Is Mr. Ferguson an attorney?
Yes, yes.
Would you please refer to him as an attorney?
Oh.
Just as we refer to you as an attorney.
Oh, actually.
Out of respect.
I didn't hear anybody call me Attorney Sheehan.
I just.
I mean, they didn't, but, okay, I'd be happy to. Yes, Attorney Ferguson did not deny that 2019 order of conditions is expired, and this application for Lot 4 depends on that. It depends on that wetlands delineation from 2019, which is expired. I didn't see anybody say that they weren't using these infiltration basins during construction, and there's still no evidence for the public. I have asked the town for it, for the operation and maintenance plans that are required by the SWIP, or the SWIP itself, actually. I've seen the stormwater management plan, but not a 500-page SWIP. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bott?
Before, before we get into it. So in the comments, when we send out a project to departments, we ask them to refer to those. So I've got two references from the Conservation Commission. One from the previous conservation agent, Gary Flattery, in February 28, says, "The proposed work for Lot 4 is outside of our jurisdiction, as depicted on the provided plan set, recommended adhering to a robust erosion/sedimentation control during all construction phases." We now have a new conservation agent, Emile Assing. So I asked him the same question in regard. So I asked him the same question in regard to this order of conditions. So in an email with Andy and Emile today, Emile's reply was, "I believe Ms. Sheehan is referring to an order of conditions, DEP file number SE126582, which permitted the subdivision for the proposed industrial park. That order of conditions was issued in May 19 and expired in September 2023 with COVID tolling. The permit did not specifically permit the construction project that was before the planning board tonight on Lot 4. I reviewed the site plan for Lot 4, and the proposed project is well outside of the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, 100-foot buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetlands adjacent to ricketts ponds on the site. The grade slopes up considerably at this site between the proposed activity and the BVW, which is a bordering vegetated wetland. The proposed work is located within the uplands and outside of the buffer zone. Therefore, the proposed work at Lot 4 is not subject to additional permitting with the Carver Conservation Commission. I'd highly recommend that if this project moves forward, erosion controls be implemented and remain in place between the project and the slopes above the wetland resources until the site has been stabilized completely." So from our conservation agent, that's the scoop on the order of conditions we've been discussing.
Thank you.
Andy Glyns with Fussin' O'Neill. I guess a couple of points that I think are worth addressing. I do want to confirm that what the applicant stated about there being full stormwater analysis for the definitive subdivision is accurate, and it's actually been the same engineering consultant that has been working for all applicants for this definitive subdivision that was previously approved, and they've been updating the stormwater design as each individual project has been coming in to the town as a undersite plan review and special permit. So I do have the updated versions of the stormwater analysis and have continued to review it with my staff at Fussin' O'Neill as new projects have come in. And I guess specifically regarding the infiltration basin being referred to as a sediment trap, there is the one sentence that was in the presentation this evening stating that infiltration basins should never be used as a sediment trap. That's one sentence from a stormwater handbook, and I guess I would defer to legal counsel for the town to verify that the stormwater handbook isn't actually regulation. It's the Wetland Protection Act and the Clean Water Act, or regulation, that allow guidance documents like the stormwater handbook to be prepared and referenced. And there's a separate guidance document that the state prepared on soil erosion and sediment control guidelines, and that outlines how and when sediment traps should be used, how they should be maintained. And there's also statements in the stormwater handbook after the sentence that was screenshotted in the presentation this evening regarding how infiltration basins can be cleaned and scarified to improve infiltration capacity if they are subject to sediment loads, which throughout construction, it's very common for any type of stormwater BMP to be exposed to sedimentation, even if good erosion and sediment control practices are enacted on a construction site. And to date, I haven't seen evidence that the infiltration basin there is not functioning as intended. In order to help the town and Fussin' O'Neill verify that, we've included conditions of approval for test pits and monitoring wells to be installed on individual project sites as well as within those infiltration basins. So I think really the effectiveness of those infiltration basins needs to continue to be monitored as the rest of the sites are developed and the site becomes stabilized. But that would be more under the approval of the definitive subdivision itself and not under individual lots, even though those lots may ultimately discharge stormwater to those infiltration basins. And I guess the town planner addressed the conservation agent email. I don't know if there's anything else specific that the board or the public would like me to address, but I think those were the bigger pieces that I wanted to weigh in on.
All right. So from what I understand, what we went over earlier tonight, based on that, we were making it so that maintenance will continue and will take place for the issues that are and could be a concern regarding that. True?
Correct. So basically, in order to ensure that the town has the data that they'd need to be able to verify that the proposed stormwater systems continue to function as designed, you know, there've been conditions of approval in place, and, you know, it would be prudent for Operation Maintenance Department to continue to make inspections if there's specific concerns on the functionality of the infiltration basins at their current state.
And that would be Mr. Opachinsky's responsibility, and I just want to say, not Mr. Fuccini's.
The owner of the subdivision road, so as I understand, those are still the legal owners of those, I guess, the subdivision versus Lot 4.
Can I ask Attorney Sheehan a question?
You're the chair.
Are you comfortable with our town council taking a look at what Mr. Glyns said that he would like to address as far as, what was it?
The question regarding the stormwater handbook specifically pertaining to infiltration basins being utilized as a sediment trap.
Yes, you can certainly ask town council, but I can tell you my legal opinion, and I have researched it, and there are cases that say the stormwater standards, including what is in the handbook, are incorporated into the stormwater regulations and are mandatory. Now, again, you have your own stormwater standards as well. You're requiring this project to comply with stormwater standards, and that includes what is in the stormwater handbook for design and maintenance of best management practices in all these different types of stormwater systems, infiltration basins, et cetera.
And so are you happy to bring that back and say that that's exactly what we're trying to do earlier tonight? We're trying to make sure that that gets taken care of and that the maintenance is done.
Right. Those are proposed regulations that you're working on, but right now, the federal government, the Federal Clean Water Act required Mr. Opachinsky to file a construction management permit and have a SWIP. Where is the SWIP and who has been doing the inspections? It's been since 2018, six years. Where are the inspection reports for this stormwater system that are required by federal law as well as by your own stormwater regulations under the planning board? Yes, I will, yes, you don't have jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act, but you have stormwater standards that you're supposed to be enforcing and making sure that this project is properly designed and maintained.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Ferguson, do you want to speak on Mr. Opachinsky's behalf regarding that statement?
May I have a moment to confer?
Yeah.
I would concentrate as far as, yes.
We were provided with a stormwater protection plan handbook. It's currently in one of our construction trailers. I'm not sure if it's one that was moved off the site. We had a waystation at the beginning of Spring Street when we first started there. That's been relocated to another site. I'm sure I can find that book. We had a pit manager that was in charge of doing the reporting. Unfortunately, he's no longer with us, so it might take me a little bit, but I know I can track down the reports.
I would like you to find it. I think that would help, Attorney Sheehan.
Sure.
That would be good. Thank you.
Just if I may, just very quickly, I question the relevance to Lot 4 and some of what Attorney Sheehan has raised in my mind, you know, is almost, sounds like a request for enforcement, if you will. And so to the extent that the board was inclined to vote in favor of the special permit, I thought I understood the chair to signify that there might be a condition for ongoing maintenance and in accordance with applicable law, that to me seems perfectly fine. That would be an issue separate and independent from a request for enforcement with respect to a prior order of conditions or what have you.
Yeah. My concern was regarding Mr. Opachinsky's, you know, position in this.
Yes.
So I'm going forward with asking for us to separate this completely from any concerns that may have been on Lot 3, and we are going to directly address this as Lot 4.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the board.
Now, Mr. Bob, do I need to ask for a motion for that, or do we go forward in making a motion for Lot 4?
So, you know, I drafted a draft decision. Whether the board wants to take any additional testimony or close the hearing and discuss a draft permit is up to the board.
Okay. Well.
So we've heard from, sorry, I'm going to step on your, so I think Andy, Mr. Glyns, has provided his final technical report, and I've done my very best to incorporate all the comments from his technical report, conditions, waivers into the draft decision.
Okay.
Is there any further public, is there any further public comments?
Before I close the public hearing, I'd like to make sure that there aren't any other concerns or questions from the audience. All right then.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more item on the sediment trap. The Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Handbook does have two different definitions. There's a sediment basin and a sediment trap. They're defined in the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Guidelines, and the statement that was used in the presentation this evening clearly referenced sediment trap. There's also a sediment basin in the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Handbook with different guidelines from the state. And the one sentence in the stormwater handbook that was in the presentation this evening said sediment trap, not sediment trap and sediment basin, just a, I don't know, nuanced item that I think the board should take into consideration if that's, you know, seems to be a critical point that's been discussed this evening.
Okay. Very well. I did see you raise your hand, Attorney Sheehan. If it has to do with his answer, then I would like to hear what you have to say.
Well, thank you. Just to specify, we're talking about an infiltration basin. Yes, the language was used. It's acting as a sediment trap. Yes, that's, we're not talking about a structure. That's a sediment trap. We're talking about an infiltration basin. I put the slide up there that shows what one is and how it's supposed to work post-construction. So anything about the sediment trap is a trap. It really has nothing to do with what I was saying. We're saying that the infiltration basin is being used during construction. It's being pumped out. They don't deny it. They've been using it for years. That's what we're talking about, just to clarify. Thank you.
General?
Yes.
For the record, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. I think you heard the applicant state that he was not using the infiltration basins, both of them, as temporary sedimentation basins.
This is true. I'm sure that you have that recorded.
Okay. Each lot on a separate, on its own merit, had a separate erosion and sediment control plan with a temporary sedimentation basin on it. So as each lot is developed, those mitigation measures were used during construction. The, as Mr. Glyns also mentioned, it's customary during a construction project, this project is still in construction, but of course, the basins are being used in part because the roadway has been paved, that there's a roadway there that's in place, and the catch basins are accepting runoff and directing a portion of the roadway to the infiltration basins. But as Mr. Glynn mentioned, it's customary for a site that's still under construction for sediment to migrate towards these basins when the site isn't totally stabilized. Hence, the recommendation at times when this happens is to scarify and replace the bottom of the soil at the bottom of the basin. So to restate, there's no, in my opinion, there's no point in involving town council to render an opinion on whether or not the handbook applies because these basins have not been used as sedimentation basins.
Okay.
Okay?
If you could please sign in.
I did.
Thank you.
All right. All right then. I am going to ask for the public hearing to be closed at this time.
So moved.
Mr. Gatski?
Yes.
All right then. Mr. Gatski?
Aye.
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 Kevin Robinson says aye. So the only thing that the board would allow me to ask, is it really necessary for us to seek town council on wording? Because I'm very simple, and I look at this project as, this really is an issue that's based on the weather. If it rains, those are going to get used, and the dirt that's on the top of the ground is going to move around, and it's going to go into these basins. And that's it. And Mr. Opachinsky is cleaning it, removing it, and putting in and bringing in new sand. So that, board, that's where I'm at with that.
So to your question, we don't get to decide if we use town council.
Okay.
We ask the town administrator.
Okay.
About accessing town council. So I'll be happy to forward something along.
That would be my only concern, but I mean, given the fact of what Mr. Glynn has given us as his professional opinion, and I would like to go forward and I would like to ask for a motion to approve this.
I will make that motion.
I will second.
Approve what?
Approve, are we closing this?
We did close.
We just closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing, and now I'm asking for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan and special permit for Lot 4, Ricketts Pond, Spring Street, innovation.
I'll second that.
Are we going to go over the draft first?
Well, we've done that, and then now it's discussion.
Yes, right.
So we've got a motion to approve, and did I hear a second?
Yes, you did.
Who was the second?
And now, discussion.
Okay, second.
All right. Would you like me to sort of delve into the draft decision that I put together?
Yeah. Should we allow Mr. Gatski to discuss his discussion before that?
No, no.
You're fine.
Right. That's what I thought.
Out of respect to you, I just want to make sure.
Cover and everything.
Yes, please.
So the first thing I'd like to say as a technical matter is that the chair needs to appoint the associate member to vote on the special permit. Because we have an absence, and the absence is Mr. Williams. So Mr. Williams was on the previous hearings. By the way, it's very handy when adjusting things. So Mr. Williams was on the previous hearings. By the way, it's very handy when adjusting things when the person's last name is Williams. I only have to change the mister to miss, so thank you, Don, and for working this out for me. So, so at this point, you've got one member who's missing. It's a supermajority vote, and this is the role of the associate member, to vote in an absence of another member. So with you anointing.
I appoint him, or we ask for a motion to approve?
Uh, you, you make that call. You appoint him as the acting member of this.
I would like to appoint Mr. Cullen in this special permit process.
Very well. So, um, so the decision, the draft decision that I put together is ref, is, is based on essentially the other five we've done in the neighborhood. So, starting with that, at its regularly scheduled meeting of May 14th, the planning board voted to approve the special permit pursuant to Carver zoning bylaw, section 2230C for a warehouse in a building less than 20,000 square feet, and section 4341 for any use where more than 10,000 square feet of any lot would be rendered impervious. The project is located on lot four, Ricket Pond Business Park, map 32, lot 1-4, in the Spring Street Innovation District. The project will consist of the construction of a 7,494-square-foot light industrial building with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. The project is shown on a plan entitled Site Development Plan, Ricket Pond Business Park, Lot Four, off Spring Street, Carver, Massachusetts, prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group, dated February 16th, 2024, and revised through April 10, 2024, and includes roof framing and sheeting plans prepared by Package Steel Systems, Inc., dated 40424 with the following findings. The planning board's public hearing for the above referenced plan was held pursuant to section 2230 Use Regulations, 3100 Site Plan Review, and 5300 Special Permits of the Carver Zoning Bylaw. The board finds that the requirements of section 2230, 2230C, and 4341, and all other applicable requirements have been satisfied, and under section 5330, the benefits of the proposed use outweighs any detrimental impacts to the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and their proposal in relationship to that site. This is something we've discussed before in reference to this area. The board finds that the social and economic, the social, economic, and community needs are aligned with the Carver master plan. In Land Use Goal 3.1, land use policy should protect Carver's small-town rural character by encouraging growth in preferred locations. Land Use Strategy 311, future large-scale commercial growth should take place in North Carver, in North Carver. Economic Development Goal 4-1, focus traditional economic development to the Green Business Park and the Spring Street Innovation District in North Carver. The board finds that traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, are met, quoting the master plan on page 13, that these areas have appropriate zoning. Moreover, their proximity to interchanges with Route 44 enable further growth without disturbing the rural character or other undeveloped parts of Carver. The board finds that the adequacy of utilities and other public services are met as confirmed by the Carver Fire Department in their memorandum of April 26, 2024. The Carver Fire Department also noted that while the building has a footprint of less than 7,500, uh, 7,501 square feet, any future inclusion of a mezzanine or second floor will trigger the requirements for a sprinkler system. Additionally, the building may require a fire alarm based on occupancy as defined in 780 CMR, the Massachusetts Building Code. This may include manual hand pulls, horn strobe warning devices, smoke and heat detectors, et cetera. This determination shall, will be made when the building permit is submitted. The board finds that the area, while previously wooded and subject to considerable changes to the natural grade, is the product of an approved Ricket Pond Business Park definitive subdivision plan where the finished grades are consistent with the approved site subdivision plan and within one or two zoning districts, GB, Green Business Park and the Spring Street Innovation District identified in the Carver master plan that permit and encourage fairly intensive business activity in North Carver. Following documents were submitted to the planning board and/or the planning department. Application for special permit, application for site plan review, cover letter, McKenzie Engineering, plans entitled Site Plan Development, Ricket Pond Business Park, Lot Four, off Spring Street, 12 sheets, dated February 16th, 2024, revised through April 10th, 2024. Drainage calculations and stormwater management plan for site development plans off Spring Street, Carver, Massachusetts, located in, located in the Spring Streets, Ricket Pond, Spring Street, Ricket Pond Business Park, Lot Four, dated February 16th and revised through April 10th. Lot Four Business Park Project Narrative, certified of Butters List. Response to peer review memo dated April 10th, 2024. Technical specifications for wall light fixture prepared by RAB Lighting, and framing and sheeting plans entitled Preliminary Drawings for Spring Street Lot Four, prepared by Package Steel, dated April 3rd, 2024. The planning board opened a public hearing on the application on March 26th, 2024. The applicant made a presentation to the planning board, and the matter was continued April 9th without testimony, and then April 23rd, and continued to May 13th, 2024, when the hearing was closed. The planning board conducted a site walk of the property on May 2nd, 2024, that was led by Mike Fattina, the applicant, attended by members Shay, Gasky, Sordello, Emmy Williams, and the town planner. Member Kevin Robinson and the town planner later visited the site the same day. The site is an 87,845-square-foot lot located off Spring Street in the Ricket Pond subdivision near the intersection of Spring Street and Ricket Pond, just off Route 44 in Carver, and shown on Assessor's Map 32, Lot 1-4. The property is within the Spring Street Innovation District in North Carver and bounded by the Spring Street Innovation District to the north, south, and west. To the east side of the lot is Ricket Pond's, is Ricket Pond in the residential agricultural zoning district, which is over 192 feet away from the nearest landscape area of the site. This application is the fifth to be permitted within the SSID in the past year with, within the Ricket Pond Business subdivision. Light manufacturing is a permitted use in SSID with site plan review. Wholesale warehouse or distribution facilities in a building with less than 20,000 square feet, building footprint, is a use permitted with the, with a planning board special permit in the Spring Street Innovation District. The development requires site plan review as well as the planning board's special permit for any uses where more than 10,000 square feet of the lot would be rendered impervious. No manufacturing is proposed or allowed on the site through this special permit. Manufacturing processes, assembling, and fabrications are not permitted uses within the SSID zoning district. The project meets the dimensional requirements of the SSID zoning district, an 87,845-square-foot lot, or 60,000 square foot, and a 212-foot affrontage where 175-foot affrontage is required. Proposed setbacks of the property exceed the minimum widths with a 55.6-foot front, 40.1 side, and 259.9-foot rear setbacks. The maximum lot coverage by buildings is 8.5%, where 25% is the maximum. The site will contain 11 parking spaces for office and warehouse, landscaping, and other improvements. The minimum number of parking spaces for this use is nine. Per the board's consulting engineer, the applicant is meeting both the state and local groundwater recharge requirements. Test bits conducted to date within the subdivision indicate that the vertical separation of two feet minimum is being provided between the bottom of the infiltration basin and the seasonal high groundwater. FNO disagrees with the public comment suggesting that the applicant developer has had an erroneous calculation that doesn't accurately represent the pre-development stormwater runoff in volume. All stormwater runoff from the impervious surfaces on lot four will be picked up by a series of catch basins and drainage manholes to be discharged to the existing sediment for bay and infiltrated into infiltration basin one, up to and including during the 100-year storm event. The stormwater management approach was reviewed during the subdivision planning process and continues to be updated and reviewed for conformance during the review of each subsequent application for each individual lot. The chair designated the members to sit on the planning board for the purpose, the chair designated the associate member to sit on the planning board for the purpose of acting on the special permit. Due to the absence, Mr. Williams did not run for reelection to the board. Eligible voting members for the special permit include Shay, Gasky, Sordello, Robinson, associate member, Cullen. Members for the site plan include Shay, Gasky, Sordello, and Robinson, so don't get too excited about voting. You gotta vote for one. Waivers requested. Section 3130G, applicant has requested a waiver for providing the location of existing 10-inch caliper, 10-inch trees and caliper. FNO recommends approval of this waiver as the lot, since the applicant depicts the current vegetation limits on their existing conditions plan. Waiver, section 3341, the applicant has requested a waiver to allow 11 parking spaces forward to the building front line. The bylaw states that no more than eight parking spaces shall be located forward of the building front line of the lot. The Carver Fire Department has noted that efforts should be made to prohibit parking outside of the designated parking areas and loading areas. Conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the planning and permitting office. Two, the project shall be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sediment and erosion control shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron shall be swept clear, uh, and swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. A copy of an operation and maintenance plan shall be submitted to the town and Fussin O'Neal prior to the issuance of a building permit. Four, parking spaces required for warehouse and storage shall be verified once an estimated number of employees are known. Presently, nine are required, a total of 11, and a bike rack are provided, uh, are provided. Five, a bike rack per Carver zoning bylaw, 3345, is required. Six, Ricket Pond Drive and associated utilities shall be constructed for the entire frontage of lot four prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I did confirm that there is pavement throughout the entire lot. Seven, full cutoff luminaire light fixtures with astronomic timers and motion sensors shall be installed and maintained as, uh, and installed and shall be verified as part of the building permit process. Eight, the dimensions for proposed windows shall be verified during the building permit process that a minimum of 15% of the front facade is covered with windows, as should be the project, proposed materials for the building siding. Nine, the installation of a supra key is requested for keeping of keys and site contact information to facilitate rapid access in the event of after-hours emergency. Ten, a six-foot-high vinyl fence with six-inch by six-inch wildlife openings spaced every 40 feet at grade shall be installed as shown on the plan set. Eleven, a site-specific storm pollution prevention plan, SWIP, shall be provided to the town planner and FNO, Fussin O'Neal, prior to the issuance of a building permit. The project-specific SWIP must adjust dust control. It should be noted that its SWIP for the subdivision has already been prepared by the developer and is included in the stormwater report for the lot four submission. Twelve, final plan set should include a signature block for each sheet to note the planning board's approval. Thirteen, only household qualities of any hazardous materials are permitted. Fourteen, per Carver zoning bylaw, section 3131K, separate sign, permit application required where new signage is proposed, including at the site entrance. Fifteen, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, A, any outstanding balance for the review and inspection account shall be paid. B, as-built shall be submitted to the town engineer and planning department in both electronic and hard copy form prior to final inspection. And C, in accordance with section 3180, compliance of the Carver zoning bylaw, the towns engineer shall inspect the conditions to ensure it has been completed in compliance with the approved site plans and conditions. Sixteen, the dumpster pad shall be bermed, and any runoff from the dumpster pad shall be contained to the catch, uh, shall be contained to the catch basins on site. Seventeen, a vermic control plan shall be submitted to the Board of Health for the property. Eighteen, due to the elevation of the site, proximity of the limit of disturbance to the pond, and requirements for other monitoring wells within the subdivision, only one monitoring well is required to the southeast of the proposed edge of pavement. The testing criteria and frequency shall be discussed and determined by the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board. It should be noted that this section states that the cost will be borne by the property owner. Nineteen, there will be no public access to these lots, and the property shall be signed as such. Any appeal of this special permit must be filed pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 48, section 17, and shall be filed within 20 days of the filing of this decision with the town clerk.
I will note that under number 11, the word provided isn't actually in there.
Eleven, read it out to me, if you wish, Connie.
Stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be.
Oh, provided.
There's also a waiver missing for parking lot screening.
Waiver for parking lot screening.
And as we haven't assessed tractor-trailers, and the applicant has mentioned that we're gonna limit it to box trucks. That should also be a condition.
All right, so first one was waiver for screening?
Parking lot screening, yeah.
What's the second one, Connie?
Tractor trailer trucks, it's gonna be limited to box trucks.
But that was a condition, not a waiver.
Right, correct.
Okay. Ready?
If I may, um, although this is a draft, the word approve should not be included in it. The planning board voted to approve. It should be left blank until the planning board actually votes to approve. Or there should be a slash disapprove. And until the board makes its findings, they shouldn't be included in any draft.
So you'd want to state approve slash disapprove?
Or leave a blank.
Would?
And the findings of the board should not be listed until the board makes such findings. I appreciate the draft is, is, is very well written, but until the board approves or disapproves, the project, the findings should not be included.
We can simply do that, right? Approve, backslash disapprove?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's a, it's what, standard operating procedure, but that's fine.
All right, so.
Not sure on the conditions, on the conditions, line four, did you catch that?
My external word kinda hanging out there, yeah.
The hanging part of the, out there?
Hanging development, yeah.
Yep. Also, number 10, you have it down as a six-by-six wildlife opening every 40 feet. I thought that was supposed to be raised, the fence was gonna be raised six inches off the ground?
Yeah, that's on the, that is on the plan, so, uh, that, that's what is, uh, is on the plan, uh, the plan set.
I was under, I was under the impression that it's just gonna run the length of the fence.
Can we ask Eric then?
Sure.
Eric, question for you about the fence?
Yes.
Was that supposed, um, I thought the, the fence was supposed to be six inches up off the ground, the entire length?
I don't recall that specifically. I, I know the call-out in the plan was copied from lot three, and it's proposed six, six-foot-high vinyl fence with six-by-six-inch wildlife openings at grade spaced every 40 feet. And that's directly from the site plan.
From lot three?
This, this is on the site plan on lot four, and it was a copy over from the site plan on lot three to maintain some consistency between.
Right, I thought, I, yeah, I, I was under the impression that even lot three was, that's where it came from, is that lot three was supposed to be six inches the entire length.
So Eric, if you'd mind coming up to the mic, just so we can catch all that. So currently, it says a six-foot-high vinyl fence with six, by six-inch wildlife openings spaced every 40 feet shall be shown on the plan set, which is what sits on the plan sets. So the question is, should it be six inches above the entire run of the fence?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I understood.
Mike, Mike, come on up and say hi, introduce yourself.
Mike, the Cheney Bridgestone Development, I, I remember the same thing. You, you remember, John, that it was supposed to be seven feet high, or we're gonna leave six or a foot underneath it.
Yeah.
And I think we should do that.
So you're agreeing to it, that's fine.
Six-foot-high vinyl fence.
Yeah.
Set, six inches above grade.
Or foot, or whatever you think is.
I think so, six inches.
Six inches, yeah.
Yeah, we don't want kids climbing under it.
Yeah.
We don't want Derek trying to sneak under.
Yeah.
All right, so six-foot-high. All right, so six-foot-high vinyl fence set six inches above grade. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right, then...
So we have two votes. One is to approve the site plan with the listed conditions, and a second to approve the special permit. So Bill votes on the second one.
All right then, do we ask him for his reply first, or his...
You can do them either direction. We've just got two votes. So, one's for the site plan that Bill doesn't vote, one's for the special permit.
We're going to do it alphabetically.
Okay.
Just, should we go with the special permit first?
Fine with me.
Just because...
Fine with me.
Yeah. If there's a problem with the special permit, then the site plan is...
All right, let's go with the special permit. So, I'm going to, I believe G comes before...
We're actually...
Oh, no, C.
C, yeah.
No, C, sorry.
We're all set.
All right then, we're in order.
Do you need a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second. We're looking for...
We had a motion in a second to approve the Lot Four Ricketts Pond, Spring Street Innovation District.
Connie made the motion, Ellen second.
For the site plan and special permit, so we're going to...
We're going to break it down, and we're going to do the permit first. All right.
Aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
And on the site plan?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
All right, I will, since we've got a couple of these things, I'm going to clean those up and get you another copy back for signatures, okay?
How does it feel, Mr. Tom? Awesome?
I feel like one of the team.
Well, pace yourself, because you've got more work to do later on than me.
You know what, I was going to say that too. I'm going to, what do we call it, a recess? Four till, let's say, nine twenty-five. Couple of us need to use bathrooms.
All right.
You know, I love it. All right, why don't we open this back up?
All right, so...
Do you want to go on the presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so...
Sorry you guys had to wait so long.
Oh, it's okay. It was very interesting.
It was, it was riveting.
That's a good word.
Am I my spot?
Uh, yes. Let me just put my address.
No. You don't live here.
Summer person.
Yeah.
Fair weather.
You know, them's our fighting words. Them's our fighting words.
You know, when you're a guy wearing a bowtie, you're just looking for a fight most easily, you know?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, hello there. My name's Maria Jones. I'm the Public Engagement and Communications Planner for SERPED. Again, as mentioned in my title, communications, so I haven't been as heavily involved in this planning process, but we are doing outreach to our twenty-seven communities just to make sure these draft priority areas are correct. I'll defer a lot of my planning questions potentially to Mr. Bott, because he was involved in the creation and kind of the development of these areas, but we also had a lot of stakeholders in our working session back in October, so let's just get back into it. So again, we're here today to give you guys, the board, kind of a definition of what these priority areas designations are. This is, again, to reiterate, this is SERPED's plan, and there's no kind of zoning requirement for this. This is like not bonding at all. This is essentially just an overview of what our region looks like, and this is really, again, us coming to you to ask, can we plan with you, and making sure we have everybody's input to make sure these areas are correct. And again, the second part of this is to present to you these draft priority areas. So what is a PDA and PPA? This is kind of how we've defined these two sections of priority areas. So a priority development area are areas that communities have identified where they want to maybe additionally grow. They usually, sorry, they usually meet regional needs, and they're near good transportation or existing infrastructure. Priority protection areas are areas that communities have identified to protect, whether it be because they're near significant natural or cultural resources, and include habitats, water resources, historic resources, and farms. And we use mainly, like, I like to say the touch point is local knowledge combined with zoning, land use, and infrastructure when we're talking about priority development areas, and then when we're talking about priority protection areas, we're really using data based on habitats, water resources, and existing conservation areas.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
I thought there was a Cooper's Pond. Is there a different name for it here?
Yeah, so, I, we changed a lot of it, so a lot of the names have been changed from what they were originally designated back in 2013 to now. So there are some changes in naming conventions from the 2013 priority areas to now, based on the local knowledge we received during our working sessions.
So what is Cooper's Pond being referred to as now?
We'll get into it when I get into the interactive map.
Okay.
But just again, to give you an overview of the evolution of how these were created, in 2008, I don't know if any of you were here on the board surveying when we first kind of did this general pass to say, here's where we want to develop, here's where we want to prioritize. Ten, ten years later, math, I don't know, twenty, sorry.
They, they did that in 2017.
Oh, in 2017, thank you for the clarification. But generally, regionally, where we did our first passes were in 2008 in our other communities, and then in 2013, we came back to refine these boundaries, and as you've now told me, in 2017, Carver began theirs. And we're doing this other pass in 2024, just to update these boundaries given your community's needs. So the benefits of doing this, again, like I said, it's our plan, but given these designations, they can really open the door for a lot of grants, given the specific needs. So when we're thinking of priority development areas, they can kind of help you coordinate plans to win competitive grants. So again, with development priority areas, we're kind of thinking of mass work grants. This is the example we're using right now in North Attleboro, where they had designated a priority development area, and they received a $1.3 million Mass Works grants for roads and sewer, and this is kind of the development that's come out of it. And then when we're thinking of priority protection areas, just on the next slide, thank you, we're thinking about coordination with local conservation efforts to win these grants. So Norton was able to win this land grant, forgive me, I forget the acronym, but I think there's, land kind of implies this land acquisition grant, and they were able to get money to purchase land for conservation. So again, an overview of our timeline, this time around, we began last year, this was one of the first projects I started when I started with SERPED, was meeting with all twenty-seven communities, with planners, with town admins, with mayors, et cetera, to say, can we plan with you? This is kind of what this plan looks like. This is what the priorities looked like when you did your pass, either in 2008, 2013, or 2017. And then in here in Carver, we conducted our working session in October, and kind of spent a couple hours thinking through these, these boundaries that currently existed in 2013 or 2017 again. And here, now we're doing, we're really ramping up, did we get this right? Is there anything we can fix? So this is us coming to you now to say, is everything right? Is everything look okay? And then this will all culminate in finalizing these draft priority areas, and we'll have two big meetings in the region to identify areas of regional significance. So in Carver specifically, we, I think the, pulling up the map might be better to talk through it. Let me just make sure I have...
So we got the map from the draft or the interactive?
The map is there, the link is right there.
Oh.
Let me just pull up the presentation on my phone, so I can talk through it. And then these are also in the reports that we just handed out as well. Are you able to click on it, that link?
You have to hit, probably have to hit Control.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tried that too.
Thank you. So here's our interactive map, and this is available on our website, too, if we want to go to Carver. This has been a good orientation exercise for me. So the first one we want to start at was the creation of the Spring Street Innovation District, there on the northeast corner. And again, we created this just to align with the updated zoning from 2017 and the creation of the Spring Street Innovation District. Then in the North Carver Commercial and Route Fifty-Eight Corridor, and South Carver Village District, we, sorry, let me start with the North Carver Commercial Route Fifty-Eight Corridor. We kind of excluded portions of the Historic Lakem district there. And then in the South Carver Village District, we excluded portions of kind of the waterfront properties that are along Sampson Pond.
If I can just take a moment.
Please.
So when, when we say "we..."
Yes.
So we did have a local working group. So we put together a working group composed of members of the planning board, the RDA, the Conservation Commission. So we had our initial meeting, and then we had a second meeting just last week. At that second meeting last week, we went to confirm some of the discussions we had made at that meeting, and Connie can help me remember who was there. It was me, it was Connie, it was Sarah Hewens, Dave Hill from, Dave Hall from Conservation, and...
Joanna Layton.
And Joanna Layton. So we did have that core group come back and look at, you know, these are the things we talked about as a part, including things, and, or pulling things out of the, of the priority development areas or the priority protection areas.
This is the "we."
That's the "we."
Yes, yeah. I, I'm not part of the "we." They, might I say. But you can, sorry, and I also didn't give an overview of kind of the legend. So the purple are your priority development areas, and kind of the hatches there are the ones from 2017. And the kind of static purple, and then when we'll get into the green, are kind of the new areas that have been introduced. So going back to the South Carver Village District, we updated it to exclude kind of the portions that are along Sampson Pond.
It's a little confusing, because it includes the surrounding communities also.
That's original plan?
Yes.
That's a lot of my problems sometimes.
Yeah, so I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to move my cursor around without moving the whole map around. So here we are with that big black arrow at South.
Yeah. I think if you hit the plus, it might help, but I don't know if that, I don't want to disrupt your orientation.
So here at South Carver.
Yeah.
Is there a breakdown what the, the streets are on that?
Again, I would encourage the board to visit this interactive map. There's also, we also have a comment map as well, so if you have any comments, we'll try and incorporate it on our website, but I think...
The street names will be on that?
Sorry?
The street names would be on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that, for us, again, coming here is just to introduce you briefly to the plan as well, but the streets names would be on that, and I hope that they're outlined a bit in that report as well. But I, I took a spin at this today, and I think I was, as a non-Carverite, I was able to orient myself best using this map.
Yeah, so as a general rule, GIS maps are scalable, so you look at 10,000 feet, you don't see road names, you get down to 50 feet, you see road names. So as you go closer into the map, you see we've got street names on the plan as you zoom in closer.
Okay.
And a lot of our notes, thankfully, from that working group, were kind of aligned to the kind of streets and the routes and the corridors as well. Moving on to the Historic Village District, oh, sorry, Historic Village Center District, we kind of updated those boundaries to align with updated zoning. And then in the, do you want to head over there, just so you can look? It's tough, I know, I'm sorry.
I got a sticky cursor.
That's Town Center?
Yes. Right there.
That's your historic district?
No, that's Town Center. It's, it's the traditional village center of the town of Carver, I guess.
Got it, got it, okay.
And then in the South Carver Industrial Center, I think that is kind of the best indication of the update, in my opinion. I'll let Tom get there.
And this will be Tremont Street down to Pond Street, where the Council on the...
All right, thank you.
So here in the South Carver Industrial Area, you can see kind of the area where, I believe we excluded the Crane Brook and Cranberry Box parcel, and you can see where we added the Deekus property as well.
Is the added the striping?
The added is the not striping. So the striping is what we deleted, and the added is just the regular purple.
Okay, so the striping is struck?
Is the twenty, yes.
Okay, okay.
And then the other update was that we deleted the Makepeace Development Area because of ongoing mining and solar fields development. Any questions on the development areas?
What, I mean, is there going to be an explanation why that area was struck, or...
Again, here we...
Do you have that off the top of your head, or is that what I'd have to research?
I believe it was because it was all bogs.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the Crane Brook and Cranberry Box parcel.
Okay, great. That would, that was my question.
For sure. Moving on to the protection areas, so that's kind of in green, and same philosophy, the hatched green is the old ones if they're struck, and then the regular green is the new ones. And the protection areas here, there's a lot of expansions. Oh, no.
I don't think we struck any of the protection areas.
No, no, no. They, if anything, they've been expanded. The first, the first one to cite is the Cedar Swamp, so that was one that was excluded, like, there was an inclusion, then exclusion, then we're re-including it now, to include the pond in the northwest section. Then in Muddy Pond, we expanded the boundaries there to follow the new biomap core habitats, and, as well as we, the incorporation of new parcel data. And then in the Sampson's Pond Priority Protection Area, we included newly acquired properties, I believe it was the, I, please forgive me, I forgot the names, maybe I can ask you, the Bristol County Protection, or there was some, there were two newly acquired properties in the Sampsons.
Was it St. Paul?
Yes, thank you. I knew it was BBC. And then, and the newly updated boundaries in Clear Pond Protection Area, we excluded the town-owned parcels, and we added pond-adjacent parcels as well. So those are, kind of, that's kind of the overview.
Clear Pond off of Wareham?
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? Clear Pond off of Wareham Street?
That's what it is.
I wasn't sure about the Clear Pond. That's...
So give me just a sec.
It's very small.
I was going to say, I thought it was just like a glorified puddle. I know there's fish in it.
That's why we excluded a little bit.
My son touched there, but it's very, very, I'm surprised that it even registered, quite honestly.
I think it might have been an existing one from back in the day, so I think, again, trying to refine those boundaries given.
Yeah, I mean, because, say, it's just literally encompassed by bogs.
Right, but there is conservation on plan there.
Good, good.
That it butts Clear Pond on the south.
Okay.
I think that was already on the map.
Yeah. And I think, again, it was just a refining that boundary. Tom, I don't know if you had anything else to add?
Uh, I, I did not, just that I, I learned an awful lot through this process from just sitting with the people who know the town and talk about things from Connie and Sarah Hewens, and, you know, it was just great experience to learn more about the town that you work in. So, it's been a very good experience for me.
So Connie, you're remaining on that, right?
It's pretty much done.
Yeah, it was just an ad hoc working group, just to identify these areas for the purposes of the plan.
We agreed consensus with this map, and we thought it was pretty solid. We added a few priority development areas on Tremont Street where the industrial area already is. We took the historic districts out of it, and the second Atwood House, because now that's going to be restored, and it's more of a cultural aspect to the town, that was, that was pulled out. But...
But the town says to build in the village centers, and for the most part, we covered that, except for another village off of Center Street, which we didn't address, but it's, it's not very commonly known as a village, but it is part of the village business district.
Yeah, so did John's question earlier.
It's, uh-
Looked like the honestly station?
I think it's where the pumpkin butt sign is, where Center Street crosses. In the-
Forty-four?
No.
Oh, I know.
Center Street takes up-
Bond Street?
Yeah, I know, Center Street, you come out, follow it down to the end, and it takes a left, and it's still Center Street. Where it takes that left, up to the road to the school in that area there is, is a village district, a village business district. I think we did an A and R there, and the lots are kind of split. They only did like the first 30 or 40 feet of, of the lots as village business, and then behind it's all, because we ran across that in the A and Rs a couple of months back.
And so did John's point about the North Carver area. Originally, the, the development went a little further down the street, so you can see the things in the hatching that came out here. So we took anything that was not, that was in the Lakingham Historic District, it had to have frontage on Route 58 to be included. So for the most part, the Historic District travels down Plymouth Street. Only those properties in the district that front on 58 are included in the-
Well, Lakingham doesn't come out to 58, there's that small property, that triangular piece of property that goes up there on Fire Station.
Yeah, Lakingham, Lakingham goes out to Green Street.
Actually, that goes across Plymouth Street to the other side by Cumberland Farms, encompasses a couple of properties over there, but again, there's an expected level of development when you're on 58, when you're on Tremont.
Yeah, so here's the Lakingham Historic-
So Lakingham takes a right at the nursery or preschool?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Right to the historical district?
No, it goes from the fire department to behind Cumberland Farms to all the way down to-
You're talking about the district, you're talking about the district itself.
The historic district.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the road.
It runs from behind Cumberland Farms and from the fire, not quite the fire station, down to the green and follows Plymouth Street down to Gate Street.
Wow, okay.
So that's the district on the map, on the screen.
Yeah.
And the only thing that's included in the priority development area are these, essentially, these four parcels that, at the corner of Plymouth Street and North Main.
Okay.
One is companies, one is the car wash, two are making lots.
So the other thing that we added in the village center area here is the front 525 feet of the Sportsman's Club. Because we discovered last year when we went to town meeting, that that first 525 feet was rezoned for village use. So taking that methodology of the areas of the priority development typically mirror the zoning lines, we looked at that first 525 and said, if that's what it is, then that should be included in the, and that's really the only change in this area, only addition here.
So how would that be developed? It would be bought from the Sportsman's Club?
Yeah, anything that's going to be developed is going to be developed by the people who own it.
Got it.
So-
Well, I think that's why they had us change the zoning, so that they would have the opportunity to develop.
So, so this is not zoning. These are, you know, areas of, of interest to identify those.
Sure.
We do zoning, and we do zoning, we're not creating, we're not building something, we're just creating that opportunity for someone to build something.
Exactly.
And a good point, it's like, it's priority. So you can see there are areas of protection in blue, I believe in your report, that are already protected. I think, again, this is just to, to align everybody's priorities in the town.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So again, if you have any thoughts, I believe my email's on the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or defer them to my colleagues. But hopefully, we can move forward and we can give you guys updates when the draft is finalized as well.
And so there will be two?
Two kind of regional events in the fall, where we'll kind of be identifying areas of regional significance. So that's our next step right now, is just finalizing the report and then scheduling those in the fall.
If you don't mind, where is your email on? Do I, is this the report?
No, but it's in this presentation, but I can also, Tom has my email.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can just get it from Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, and I'll pass it over to my colleague, Chris, here.
Hi, everyone, Chris Welch with SERPED. So I'm kind of here in a capacity to update you guys on progress with the housing production plan. So we've made some pretty good progress for our survey. We've sent a draft over to Tom, and he will be, if he has not already, sending it over to you folks to review for any input ahead of us sending it out later this month. So the survey we're shooting to have open for a month, month and a half, as well as any engagement opportunities that crop up. So if you guys have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them right now. If you need more time to review, feel free to interface with Tom, and he can get your feedback to us that way as well. Yeah, and I'd say that's probably been the majority of our progress on the project to date, is just making sure we get the survey out in a, in a timely manner. Any questions?
I had a question. I think for, for us, it's also identifying, we like to do like tabling events in the community and stuff, so if anybody on the board can recommend, kind of, we were thinking like the Renaissance Fair last year, but we know that a lot of folks from Carver go to that.
Old Home Day.
That would be the day to do it.
Old Home Day.
Old Home Day.
What's the date for that?
It's always the last weekend of July.
Last weekend of July.
Is it July or August?
July.
July, yeah.
Cool. And yeah, a woman came, was over here and was hoping to give comment, but was like, I have to get back to my grandkids. So I hope that these kind of surveys can be that opportunity for folks who are pretty busy during the night to participate.
So, so the draft survey that I sent to you guys, and Chris said, hey, how, did you send that survey to the board members for comment? I'm like, I'm just about to. So, so you got a, a copy, there's a link to the survey. So the survey isn't live, but you can go and take a look at it and, and see all the goodies that are in there as far as the questions that we are asking. One of the other things is because not everybody has an internet address, we will be doing this as well in paper format. It'll be available at the library, it'll be available at the Council on Aging. In fact, the Council on Aging has computers as well, so if people at the Council on Aging want to do a survey online, they could do that. So I took a first look at it and I forwarded on to you folks. So essentially, I don't know if it's going to let me scroll through this without answering the questions.
We shouldn't require any questions in there, so you should be good to go through.
Yeah, good. So, you know, some of these, when we get into the survey, it talks about, you know, what is the town like in this, in this type of development? We're looking at, you know, housing types for the housing production plan. So we go in and ask, you know, folks questions about, you know, you think this is the swell thing for Carver? You like that? You don't like that? And it goes on to talk about duplexes and housing types and things like that. So this is in test mode right now, you folks can take a look at and shoot back any questions or comments you got about things. And this is likely to go live.
Probably June 1st, I'd say, latest. So you guys still have a fair amount of time to give us some feedback as well. Definitely keep it on your radar, though.
Do we do Carver Night Out?
That's a good, that's a good time.
When is that as well?
That's in August.
National Night Out?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, those are always good.
Yeah.
The state troopers come in in their helicopter, and there's lots of amusement for the kids. So a lot of families participate in that, so that's a good time.
You said August for that?
I believe, I believe so. It's before, I know it's before football season starts.
I'm thinking they're pretty close. I'll think of Old Home Day and Carver Night Out are very close together.
They're very close. I think they're within like a couple of weeks.
So early on, bets from folks like Savory and Sarah all said, you know, Carver Home Day is, is your spot.
And, yeah, I can definitely talk to our colleagues about shifting the survey to coincide with that, because we'd love to get feedback from residents with the survey at those events, especially if they're well-attended. But that, that's something that we could bat around internally, just to see if it would make sense and line up with our, the actual writing schedule for the plan as well. Because I believe our contract's over for the end of the year, so we were going to, around early fall, like, start writing some of it and all of that.
And if you're looking for an opportunity to test that, don't we have the co-op every weekend? And there's quite a few people go through that, right, right here at Charlotte Park?
Oh, the, yeah.
We have weekly co-op. If you wanted to test it, you know what I mean, to see what, you know, participation, you can't get exactly the co-op Farmer's Market.
Yeah, that's definitely something we-
Takes place every, hey, listen, the wife and I, we like to get our fresh vegetables there.
Can't complain about that, right?
Yeah, probably better vegetables than provins.
All right.
Anything else from you guys?
Sorry?
Anything else from?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, for sure. Congratulations on your appointments.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Have a great night.
I was here in 2008, acting, acting in Mr. Cullum's position as an alternate.
All right, so KG Development, discussion and possible vote, we closed the hearing on that. So I have also prepared a draft decision for that that I did not have a chance to share prior to, but I think there's a hard copy in your books. And let me-
I can't really have that information.
For some reason. Or do I?
This is what mine looks like.
Thank you. Got the fire draw.
Thank you.
Little bit different sitting here.
Trying to keep my active- Well, let's do this then.
How much of this, of this did they turn over to Conservation, Mr. Planner?
Say again?
How much of this did?
Five acres, I think, at the, at the west side, I'm looking for. Subdivisions, definitive subdivisions.
Shall we make a motion and open it for discussion?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve K and G Development's special permit and definitive subdivision plan for 85 One M Road, Carver, Mass.
Looking.
Thank you. All right. First of all, Fasano O'Neill does not approve, recommends, the board does not approve the waiver for the 100-year storm, two-year and 10-inch storm events. It's listed on page two of the draft, and I have to support our technical expert.
Got that.
All right, so if it's fine with you guys, I can read the decision as I did for the last, just to make sure we hit our stops along the way.
Is that really necessary?
It's not, just giving you options. So condition-wise, so the waivers were, the waiver for the large trees that Fasano had recommended, a waiver for changes in grade, and that's a very technical thing, exceeding five tenths of 1% shall be connected by vertical curves. I love that stuff, but I don't know, I rely on Andy for that. A waiver's been requested that the street should not intersect with another street at a grade in excess of 2% for a distance of 100 feet due to length of profile of the proposed road, this conservation subdivision. FNO recommends an approval of the waiver. Remember, we had talked about, the more grading we do, the more soil that has to come off the site. The conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, standard, file it with the registry, plan has to be constructed as approved. Sec, condition number three, observation pits for road cuts and fill areas shall be performed prior to the placement of road base and resulting, and shall be submitted to the town and FNO for review. Condition number four, the developer shall install a fence on their property adjacent to parcel 90220, matching the existing fence line along the frontage of One M Road. 99220 is the cemetery plot. Condition number five, since the proposed drainage system overflows to an existing municipal drainage system, the applicant must demonstrate that the municipal system is presently functioning adequately from the point of connection to the point of natural discharge. The developer shall inspect and clean the existing catch basin grade and sum, as well as the pipe outfall, and ensure it is in good working order. Such work shall be verified by the town's consulting engineer. Condition number six, until the street within the subdivision accepted by town meeting as a public way, the developer is required to inspect and maintain the stormwater management system and shall report to town operations and maintenance department stating that the drainage system is functioning adequately. To be included as part of the recommendation to the road to be accepted at town meeting. Condition number seven, the board of health shall approve onsite septic disposal system prior to the issuance of a building permit. So once again, this is a special permit and a subdivision plan, so there are two things to vote for that. So those are our conditions, and those are our waivers.
So board, are we going to go forward with the exception of not approving the recommendation for the 100-year storm and the two-year and 10-year storm events, consistent with the Cornell Atlas?
I can't approve the thing he says no.
Right, and if I, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to change from the Cornell Atlas to the NOAA.
Exactly.
I love that.
And I don't see a monitoring well?
There wasn't one recommended for this, I don't believe.
We do, and then we subdivision now, don't we? I thought that was general.
I, I didn't see it in, in Andy's comments, so I pulled him out of there.
Can we call Andy on that, or reach out to Fasano O'Neill regarding that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we're going to be using an overflow into an existing municipal drainage system, it should be inspected or cleaned annually, and maintenance should be done on it on a regular basis.
So until the street is accepted by the town, the developer is required to inspect and maintain, and shall report, it just doesn't have a frequency, so you want to say, report annually?
Yeah, with, yeah, yeah.
And shall report annually?
That's good language, because that's what we used earlier today.
Somebody cleans it annually anyways, so it's either the developer who's using it or the town, so.
Who reinforces that for us, Tom?
That would be, that would be our-
Board of Health?
Operation Management.
Yeah, Operation Management, because it's their system.
Okay.
So typically, like Ricketts Pond subdivision, that's all Peter O'Pochinski. So our operation and maintenance people don't inspect that because it's not theirs.
Right.
But if it comes to town-
Because it's private?
Yeah, because it's, it is not ours. So in this case, there's an existing stormwater system set up there, so they're contributing to that, as we've talked about in our stormwater management policy. That's one of the things where that developer has to report to us that, first off, to make sure it's working before they tie into it, and then they maintain it right away.
So in order to get him to do that, do we hold a forever bond, or?
We set it as a condition.
Yep.
Okay.
And then he can come to the town and say, hey, listen, you guys clean this out annually and inspect it annually anyways, can we just throw you a little something, something to cover the cost of that? And that would-
Absolutely.
I would, I wouldn't think that our, that there would be an issue with it as long as it's being done.
Right.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that, you know- Yeah, I, I can tell you that, uh, you know, one of the things in lots of towns, smaller towns particularly, is trying to get to all those things in their regular cycle. Uh, some towns have a Vector truck, it's like this giant vacuum cleaner that comes and just sucks everything out of it, makes a ton of racket. Uh, we have a bucket, we have a clam.
Street sweeper.
Yeah, we have a clam bucket. Well, it's got this giant snuzzle on the front of it, uh, vacuum cleaner for catch basins, it's got a magnet.
Drives down there.
It's, it's got a cool, it's got a magnet on the front that picks up the grate, the vacuum hose goes in and sucks all the stuff out.
Sounds like Snuffleupagus.
Except, we don't have one of those. We got a clam bucket. So a God-fearing man with a hot crowbar pulls that grate up, and they put a bucket in there and scoop out as much stuff as they can and try to hang out with the rest of stuff.
Steam engine one that goes down.
Yeah, so, yeah, the Mike, the Mike Mulligan steam shovel.
Oh, yeah, you just, thank you.
It's my favorite story.
Pulled that right out of my mouth.
Kid, kid drug, digging a hole. Um, so, you know, if someone's doing that and reporting to the town, the town doesn't have any issue with that, because it's just hard to get to all those things.
Exactly. Uh, and the other thing that was agreed on was no work within ten feet of the graveyard. They adjusted things around so that, uh...
Nothing would be deserved.
Right, we wouldn't have any unexpected surprises.
We don't want poltergeist.
Right.
All right, Mr. Bott, so when, uh, you're done with that.
And so do you want to vote this contingent on confirmation about the monitoring well?
Yes.
I don't think we need to wait, I think.
Oh, we don't? Oh, good.
We can put in the monitoring well and approve it, right?
If it's, uh, if it's.
We've done it for every subdivision.
Have we done it for subdivisions, or have we done it for site, uh, for commercial?
Every subdivision.
We've done it? Okay, if we've done it for every subdivision, then of course.
Andy, Andy recommended it as the more information you have, the easier it is to start.
Okay, install monitoring.
So then we can go forward.
Okay, so install monitoring well as recommended by Fasen O'Neil.
I don't mind waiting, but I don't wanna hold them.
No, I don't wanna hold them, that's fine. If you're okay with that, that's fine, it's us putting it as a condition.
So it now says install monitoring well as recommended by Fasen O'Neil.
Excellent, so.
I don't know if we can say recommended by Fasen O'Neil without actually checking with Andy first.
Well, and that's my point, is that if they didn't recommend one, then it's a condition that they don't have to do.
Well, we can install it as a condition. We've done it for every other subdivision, we did it for all of those. Wenkenco proposed subdivisions and all the other subdivisions, I think the board has made a habit of including all subdivisions at this point. But, yeah, I, I.
That's what you like, install monitoring well?
Install monitoring well based on recommendations of the board of health, Fasen O'Neil and the planning department, isn't that normally what we put in?
Um, yeah, uh, with the, with the, um, information.
I could shoot something over to Andy, I'm sure we could have an answer on the board.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good idea.
I mean, can't you just replicate what, how it was written for Wenkenco?
Yeah, I'm gonna. Yeah, well, I'm gonna cut and paste it out of the decision we just voted for lot for.
Question for you, does it matter, the size of the subdivision, or do you require regardless?
Uh, it was told to us that, uh, we should do it on all subdivisions, because it will give, uh, them more information to work with, so.
No, I didn't, I didn't know if it depended on the size, because this is fairly small.
Well, they were all around five. Some of them get very big, but most of them are what, five to seven?
Yeah, okay.
Well, I'm specifically thinking of the one that was just off the high ski. Was that seven or nine?
I think it was, we approved, we approved seven, but it had an existing, it had an existing line on it.
Which one is that?
No, I think we were able to put an affordable on it.
Oh, that was the Limbia's path?
Lin, yes, yes. I think that's when we started doing, uh...
I, I didn't think they had one there, because that's older.
Right, i- i- if, if it was approved, one of them had been abandoned for years.
And that was Limbia's path.
Yeah.
That's going forward, I remember that that's when we made a decision to start to have.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, um, it, it, that was a, unfortunately, that was a heartbreaker.
That was.
The, the gentleman that was developing that, bud.
That was a very close friend of mine, and I made a couple of presentations in front of the board for that project, yeah.
I think we required one on the three lot down in Wareham Street and South Power.
So, uh, so here's the language from, um...
See, on this one, I think we're requiring a well on each site, but I, that's not, I think we, I don't think that's what we wanna do, we just wanna...
So I'm just snagging, the testing criteria and frequency should be discussed and determined by the board of health, that's what we wanted to put with our monitoring well, correct?
And placement. And that would replace conservation with Fasen O'Neil.
Tom, on number nine, I think you just have to put within, not to interrupt you.
Now, pull out conservation commission and put in town engineers or Fasen O'Neil, whatever they, I think town engineers might be more long-term, productively.
Because I don't believe there is anything on the site presently that says where that monitoring well should be.
Right, normally there isn't, that we leave it up to the board of health and pretty much Fasen O'Neil to decide.
Right, so no work within ten feet, monitoring well, what else we got?
I think you covered it.
I think we're good to go.
I think you got the, uh, the fences in there and all the other concerns.
Are we, uh, ready to go and ask for a motion?
We're already in the motion.
Oh.
We opened it for discussion.
Right.
And so who made that motion?
I think I made it. I don't know if John or Ellen seconded it. I made a motion to approve the K and G Development's special permit and definitive subdivision plan for eighty-five Wenham Road. And then I thought Mr. Kaski seconded it.
I think I, I think I seconded.
All right then.
Um, it is a special permit, so we should probably.
Yep, so we're gonna go back to, uh...
You're gonna have to assign. Mr. Cullum.
Mr. Cullum?
So up here in.
So.
Two votes and one nice.
He's gonna be too tired to come to them.
I thought I had plugged that in there, but.
So, are we good? Can we go to the vote?
Yep.
All right. Cullum.
Aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Mr. Shea, aye.
Ellen Sodillo, aye.
Mary Ellen Williams, aye, but.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
I didn't know, because I'm not on it.
No, you're.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're.
You are, you, you are, but it's just gonna be an "are" changed to an "s".
So actually, in this case, yeah, in this case, you're not.
I'm not, yeah.
Because.
She just happens to have the same last name.
Ah, right, right, right.
I will admit that I was here for the entire presentation, but I wasn't sitting on the board at that time.
So we have to strike Mr. Williams, or do we get his signature?
No, we just put.
We add, we add Mr.?
Yeah, we just, Ms. Williams is abstinent.
Mr. Cullum said Mr. Williams, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your aye.
Alrighty. So we got a motion, people voted?
For the special permit, now we vote for the second one.
Mr. Cullum?
I can have one for this.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Gasky.
Uh, on the, uh, on the special permit.
I did.
You voted.
We did it.
Kate Manamis, I believe. Did you say aye?
Yes, I, I said aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alright.
Planner notes, do we have planner notes first, or do we have member notes?
We have chapter sixty-one A, don't we?
Yep.
Yep.
My only question is this, uh, I don't believe it's on a priority, preservation or priority development site, so I don't, I don't know that we have a whole lot of recommendations to make on it.
Why is Fuller Street familiar? Where is that?
It runs up past the dentist's office.
I'm gonna bring it up on the GAS.
It goes to Stone?
Forest Street, behind the video place there, it's the one that runs up from the.
Yeah, yeah, and then it connects to Middle Borough, Stone Street, got it.
Is that fifteen Fuller?
Yeah, fifteen Fuller.
So. So this is the area in question. The long one, and these four down here. So as we scroll out, and unfortunately, this, uh, program won't let me select multiple lots. So there's your lots that are up for approval for sixty-one A.
So.
And the question is, does the town wanna pass on their sixty-one A, or do they wanna consider exercising, uh, the sixty-one A option?
So, isn't it, it's... So, it looks like that one here. So one, two, three, and then the long one is four.
Isn't this one of them that came in for subdivision, preliminary subdivision plan?
I don't recall any on Fuller Street myself. But it's, looks very similar to one of the other ones.
Yeah, that, that had some funky shape to it, and it.
It was a house, and it was splitting it into two.
Yeah, Indian Street, they haven't come to us yet.
That was on Meadows.
Yeah, there's for-sale signs on it, but they haven't come to us yet, and I mentioned that to Monty. I'm like, "Monty, you got signs out there, but you haven't done sixty-one A on that yet." So, uh, so these are the lots, forty-nine, one.
I think, I think it starts at the other end.
I think, yeah, it goes over.
So. Four dash one, four dash two, four dash three, four dash four, four dash five, four dash six.
And this is just a recommendation on whether the town should acquire it, this isn't approving the lots or anything on those lots.
Correct, and i- in the event that the town did opt to exercise their right of first refusal, the town has one hundred and twenty days to buy it.
Is this residential agriculture?
It is. An issue we tend to run into unless the developer wishes to extend that period, is where do we find the money within a hundred and twenty days? Uh, until we kinda get around to town meeting next year and look at the possibility of taking CPA money and, uh, giving it to an affordable housing trust that would be empowered by town meeting to execute something like that. So one of the things that some towns do is they take their CPA money and say, "We created this affordable housing trust, these are the people we trust to look at properties", something comes up and the town says, "Yeah, we'll exercise the sixty-one A on that", and that affordable housing trust is authorized by town meeting to buy that piece of land. And that's where you get the nimbleness that you cannot get, uh, from the process that we have currently. Sometimes the developer's willing to work with you, but sometimes they're not, and they're like, "No, we're not gonna extend the purchase and sale on this."
Do we have specifics on the acreage of forty-one, forty-two, forty-three? I mean, I guess my question would be if the, you know, if we recommend it, is it something that the town would be able to, uh, have developed for the purpose of a cul-de-sac?
So, all these lots were created as buildable lots, so they're all essentially one point three eight acres, so they're all sixty thousand square feet, so.
Okay.
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand, sixty thousand. Uh, this one here, one point four, uh, in a bit more of a linear, uh, extent.
That one's kinda funky. That's, that odd shape is one point three?
The one in red?
Hmm.
One point four. One three eight, one three eight, one three eight.
Would the town, would it come to us with an A R I, not an A N R I, and put those four together?
Yeah, well, if the, if the town bought.
It's already got, it's already got a purchase and sale agreement.
It doesn't, it doesn't, uh, the town supersedes that, but if the town were to purchase that, they could make all four lots and, and group them together to do, like, the conservation subdivision, or the town has a subdivision for affordable housing, where they could put a much higher density on that.
Alright, so do I have a motion to, uh, recommend this?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the recommendation to approve the purchase of these lots.
To exercise the challenge forty-one, sixty-one A option?
Exercise, yes, yes, correct.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Now, for the purposes of discussion, um, it's a nice-looking area, but I can't, because it's not a priority development, priority protection, it's not, I don't see where the town can come up with the funds at this particular time, but again, it's another cautionary tale that we should be setting up a fund where the town has the opportunity to, when something comes along similar to this, make the purchase.
Absolutely.
But in the case of Zero Lakeview, it was four hundred K, this is nine hundred K. So, at some point, how much money do you have in the bank?
That's it, and it, and frankly, if it was, if it was up to me, it would, it should be around the nine hundred K mark, because it should be substantially sized uh, for development, it shouldn't, we shouldn't be piecemealing small lots together, we should do it as an appropriate project and, and not as a little here and there piecemeal, trying, because it brings me back to, uh, the Green Street development and the cost to the town to create one affordable house in that area is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars. Whereas a half a million dollars would go a long way in purchasing the land and letting the developer come in and do the work.
And that's why we are approving to recommend, to, to approve their recommending, the right, of course, of course.
So right now, we got a motion and a second to exercise the sixty-one A.
The motion was to, I, 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 I think that, I don't see that it's.
We could say we approve it, but Chesa is not gonna be in the mind.
Right, and that's, it's, you know, I don't.
We, we, that's our due diligence, we did it.
Okay, so a yes vote says.
Buy the property, or exercise, we recommend that you exercise the right to buy the property, a vote, and, and I, I don't think that that's critical enough to.
Okay.
That this is.
I just wanna make sure which direction we're in.
And no vote would be not to exercise that.
Okay.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says nay.
And Mr. Shea says nay.
Ellen Sodillo says nay.
Mary Ellen Williams says nay.
And Kevin Robinson says nay.
But again, I, I think the importance of having the funds available to, let's say it was ten acres, and it was a nice little setup like that, where the town could just say, we're, we're, a developer's come and he says... and he says he wants to put twenty, twenty-five houses on this, on this, and they're all going to be affordable. Then that's, that's where the town.
But the town's not going to be able to afford to do that.
Right, well, again, if you set up an affordable housing trust, it also allows not only the CPC to work with that, but it also allows the town, from the sale of town owned properties and various other endeavors, to build upon that fund. I believe the state is coming forward with proposed tax for million dollar homes, and the town has the opportunity to hit million dollar homes up with something like a two percent fee for, you know, extravagance or whatever they want to call it.
You gotta be kidding me.
I'm just telling you what, what the state is doing, now.
That's such BS.
Right, and, and it's just more taxes on the one hand, but if it was dedicated to a fund like this, then it would serve a common purpose rather than going into the general fund, because we do have to reach that ten percent.
We don't.
Well, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
But if we don't do it, the state will make us do it, there's already bills going in the Ways and Means Committee, the, the M B T A law and.
There, there, and there's, there's towns, there's communities all over the state that are fighting it, and they're fighting it successfully.
I agree. But I will work to get the best deal possible for this town, whether I, I vote for it or not, I will work on the best deal that if it is approved, that the town gets the best deal possible, but the town ultimately makes the decision.
All right.
So, so the requirement under the M B T A, the requirement under the M B T A bylaw is to create zoning, is not to build anything, we don't have to build anything, we have to create the zoning.
Right.
So someone has to say, they've created this zoning, now I'm going to go build something on that. And I've said this before in a number of different venues, when I was in Falmouth, we saw multiple forty Bs a year, four or five a year. Over the past twenty years in Carver, there hasn't been a forty B. And my theory is, is that because the market rate units have to underwrite the affordable units, in Falmouth, you can get enough money for the market rate units to underwrite the cost of the affordable units. If that was the case in Carver, for twenty years and cheap money for ten years, we would have seen a forty B somewhere if the numbers penciled out. So we are going to create zoning for the M B T A as a hundred and seventy-five other communities are. So with that, people have the option to build. Now, if I'm a developer, and I mean no disrespect to Carver at all of this, and say, I'm a developer and a hundred and seventy-five towns have now created zoning where I can build high density units at, places that may have sewer and things like that, is my first stop going to be Carver where the dollar numbers aren't quite working for me? Or am I going to go to Quincy, am I going to go to Williams, am I going to go somewhere closer to the city where their unit prices are higher? So we create zoning that somebody has to make work, and then they're going to flood the market with a hundred and seventy-five towns that have zoning that allows this. At what point are we going to see somebody actually try to build something in Carver based on that zoning? It may be a very long time, but you certainly want to make sure that the zoning that you're creating, you're comfortable with. So my take is that we're creating zoning, we are not building anything, the market will dictate when people build things and where, and in a hundred and seventy-five towns, where does Carver show up on that list of, oh, let's build here first? Versus, I'm this far from the red line, I'm over here by the commuter rail line. Middle Borough in Kingston, if you're looking at comparable areas, would likely be much more attractive to folks because of the proximity to the rail lines. Carver is, you know, we're that middle child, and as the fourth out of five, I don't think it qualifies me as the middle one, but I, I feel their pain. We create zoning, but we're not.
We do have, we do have Middle Borough.
It's going to happen.
Middle Borough's got it, I mean, and when it is going to happen, I don't think that we can afford that particular place to be, to be in, but it does look like, you know, a developer could possibly do it, put it all together and make it happen.
They can come in with a forty B tomorrow and do it.
Right, right.
Maybe not as intensive, but on the other hand, the developer once said, all the good land's been built on, so eventually they'll come knocking at our doors, they'll get the development over in Plymouth, they built, they built developments that.
There's nothing left.
A third of the housing in Carver.
I'm talking Poltergeist over there, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
And is that sustainable for them, for their tax base, for, for their, they got town water, how many times did they have to replace the sewer in the past couple of years?
Once.
Well, they replaced it once, it melted or rusted out within two years.
Yeah, that was, that was a very bad operator.
That was horrifying, just to hear that.
That was crazy.
Well, I'd like to see it for young families as affordable housing, to be quite honest with you. What, that's seven, right?
So one of the things, so one of the things the M B T A.
Sorry, I just wanted to bring up, you talk about affordable housing, I just heard about a place down in Cranberry Village, one of the mobile homes down there, went for three hundred thousand dollars, nobody's thinking of affordable housing, nobody, everybody's.
But affordable housing is kind of based on one's income, is it not?
It's based, it's based on the income, the median income for the Boston metropolitan statistical area. So they look at Boston, everybody around there.
I do appreciate that, John, but I think it is based on, you know, it's firefighters, it's police, it's young entrepreneurs.
But it sounds a lot. But it, but it sounds a lot, it sounds a lot like the rent control in New York that drove the prices of everything up, and it ended up with apartments that were meant for two or three or four people having two or three generations living in them because nobody wanted to give up the rent control.
Right, but if it, but if it's not built affordably, then it's going to be, the state could possibly tell us, you're, you're putting forty B there.
Well, we have worked on it tonight, a little bit of that getting the affordable housing in is by coming up with the priority development areas where we can put in smaller lots and smaller setbacks and higher density housing. That's, that's, that's part of the step, unless we're building them and developers don't come down here to build an affordable house, and that's the problem.
Well, I, I prefer to see, you know, seven families with no more than twenty-five kids draining our school system, fire department, station. That, that would be nice, I'd like to welcome my, I'd like to welcome my family to come live here where they grew up, you know?
Yeah, I want to see more fifty-five development.
As I would imagine the rest of you members would.
I'd like to be able to hold on to my house till my, and pass it down, we'll see.
Absolutely. All right.
All right, so we got a couple of things, we got planning board member notes, town planner notes, which I have some discussion about, town meeting motions and some minutes as well.
I would just like to thank the people of Carver for giving me the opportunity to continue to remain on this board. I, I thank you very much for your vote and your support.
To that, I will add, I would like to thank the people as well for voting me in.
We're lucky to have you.
Yes, we're very thankful to have you on board.
Thank you.
And I want to take a moment again to congratulate Ms. Williams and Mr. Robinson on my victory.
Thank you.
And, uh, good luck to you and, and thank you for the time you've allowed to meet the service chairman.
Town meeting motions, so we got two things. We, we received a, a request from the interim town administrator, and by the way, our, if you didn't get a chance to meet our new town administrator, he'll be here, I think he was here today and certainly he's here tomorrow. So Elaine's request, which I forwarded to board, was, the, the select board requested at their meeting last night, this is a meeting of May seventh, for the reorganized planning board to vote on the annual town meeting article submitted for an increase in lot size frontage at their next meeting scheduled for May fourteenth. So this gets back to the conversation about, well, why would it be on the warrant if the planning board didn't recommend it? And as I was explaining, you have put things on the warrant to have the hearing in order to figure out if it's something you want to do. So things go on the warrant, and then in the hearing, you make a recommendation up or down. So the question that they've had, and they've asked a second time, would the board, since they're not recommending it, consider voting to withdraw this article from the warrant?
Didn't we just do that?
Well, we, we had, we, we, well, we had a discussion about it, but the board never voted, and I reported back, we.
We did? Yeah, we did.
We voted.
We chose to take no action.
Yeah, we took, took no action, so, so they asked the question the second time. Would you, would you ask the, the, the new board, you know, assuming.
Oh, oh, I see, because of the new board, because.
Well, the, the new board is bound to uphold the old board's decision. We've all done it personally, whether we like the decision or not, we're bound to uphold it. But this is the fourth time this has come in front of us, and I don't understand what the big concern is in letting the, the town vote on this. I mean, isn't that part of our job is to?
I agree with you fully.
So, so to that event, the town, the, the, the planning board is required to produce a report for town meeting. And that town meeting report I put in includes motions. So there's two things on the warrant from the planning board, the first one is putting us our zoning online. So that's this first, oh, sorry.
I feel like this is deja vu.
Yeah, so here's the first article for town meeting, we're going to put our zoning on, online. So the planning board recommends favorable action on this article five zero zero. The second article is about increasing the lot size. So in this case, the motion that I have proposed is, I move that the town not vote this article as set forth in the motion, because it's in the warrant, but the planning board hasn't made a positive recommendation on it. So when we have a positive recommendation, we vote, vote this as written in the warrant. But because the planning board has an unpositive recommendation, that motion should be, I move that the town not vote this arti, for this article. That's what your recommendation is, two, three, zero.
Say love me?
Okay.
So I'm asking for a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this is what I'm proposing to do, because that's how it would typically look in that report. We recommend this motion, move to approve as written in the warrant, in this case, we're going to say, we move to not approve this article as written in the warrant.
So is it my responsibility to ask the rest of the members?
Well, I said, in the absence of the board removing it from the warrant, and this was the discussion we had the other night with the select board, is that they seem to be under the impression that someone could just take something off the warrant. My take, reading Massachusetts general law, was if the law says these people can put something on the warrant, the planning board, the regional planning agency, or ten taxpayers, we know you can't touch anything that ten taxpayers petition. And my take was that, well, if the planning board is empowered by Massachusetts general law to submit something for the warrant, it's just like ten taxpayers, you shouldn't take it off, you should leave it on, but if the proponent, being the ten taxpayers who says, no, we decided we don't want to move our article, or we don't want to, we'd like to remove it from the warrant, they could. So the two options were, and, and this was always the option for tho, for those motions. If the board doesn't want to remove it from the warrant, then it goes to town meeting with the recommendation not to approve.
I, right.
That's the way we're leaving it.
I would still leave it as a positive, because once you start making a negative, then you get people voting no that mean yes, and yes that mean no. So keep it simple.
Yeah, I moved you not approve this article.
I remove, right, and then you're making it a negative, so people are going to vote no, which is an approval of the article. And that's where the confusion lies, so it should be clear.
So the vote will be for that article.
If you vote no, it's an approval. That's, right?
To approve an article, it has to have a two thirds vote in the affirmative.
Yes.
So we're saying to people, don't vote for this, that's what that motion says.
So we get what, and you get a two thirds vote in the negative, that still approves the article. If, if you don't want to confuse people, the motion should be, I move that the town approve this article as set forth in the warrant.
That's not your recommendation, your recommendation is not to approve.
But that's not, yes, our recommendation is clearly printed on that, but, but the proposed motion should be to approve the article, vote yes to approve it and no to turn it down. Because if you say do not approve.
We've gone through this in our meetings.
You're asking people to vote no to approve it and yes to turn it down, and then it gets.
So the motion, don't vote for this. And people go, okay, we won't vote for it, we'll vote it down.
We can say no.
Hey, that's what he, that's his point, is the confusion.
We can, you can say, the planning board does not recommend favorable action on it, they voted it down two to three. But once you start confusing the motion, then you start confusing the people. So yes is a no and a no is a yes, and, and all of a sudden, Snosbury's don't taste like Snosbury's anymore.
We're going to beat this to death unless there's, unless there's a way to say it, what Mr. Shea said. That's it, so why can't it be written that way? Why, why can't we say that we do not approve this article, but we, you know, the town has the right to vote if they want to go forward and approve the lot sizes increased? So how do we say that so it's not confusing?
To me, if not confusing, if you say, don't vote for this article.
And we can say that, but the motion should be clear and.
I move the town not vote for this article.
They'd still vote no, meaning no.
But if you say, if you say.
The motion doesn't change the yes, no vote.
Don't vote for this article. The motion doesn't change the article.
If you say not approve, a no vote is a yes vote to approve.
The article is to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw.
I understand that, but the motion is in the negative, so to approve it, you vote in the negative, to turn it down, you vote in the positive.
I, 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 I hear your Orwellian discussion, but I think it's crystal clear if you say, move to not approve, not vote for this article.
Okay, so.
How would I vote if I wanted to not approve the article?
You vote the affirmative.
Vote no.
Right, vote no, right, yeah.
Wait, no, if I move that the town not approve the article and you vote no, then it's, you're approving that article.
The motion isn't changing the article, the article is saying, this is going to happen, so yes, it is going to happen or no, it isn't.
The article says to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaw, and our recommendation is, don't, and our motion is, I move you not approve this article. That's crystal clear to me.
So in order to not approve this article, you have to vote in the affirmative, you have to vote yes to not approve the article.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Article is.
If you vote no, then you're, you're, you're voting to approve the article.
No.
You're, you're voting no against the motion, and then motion is.
The article says to see if the town will vote to amend, yes means I'm going to vote to amend.
No, no, it's, it's not about the article, the article's completely understood, it's the motion. If you move that the town not approve article XXX, I would vote yes to not approve it, and I would vote no to approve it. If I want to approve that article, I'm going to have to vote no to the motion which is not to approve.
I respectfully disagree again.
And as the chair, I'm just going to say, this is one of these places where we just have to agree to disagree, because I believe you might be the only one that feels that way at the moment.
No, I actually agree with him.
You agree, okay, well, I'm glad that, I'm glad that I'm asking.
Perhaps we can ask the moderator.
So, well, I mean, what do we do, we're split then, because.
You take out the word not and make it a clear yes or no vote. I move that the town approve the article, I want to approve it, I vote yes.
But that's not your recommendation, your recommendation is, don't.
It doesn't matter, our recommendation is on here.
But it doesn't matter what our recommendation is.
The proposed motion is a requirement, we will be reading our recommendation.
The article, the article is on the warrant, our, this is our recommendation, we don't recommend, we don't.
The planning board does not recommend to take favorable action on this, and then you go into a proposed motion. It's, that's how it's always been done, but if you voted in the negative, you have to vote in the positive to uphold it, it is, it's.
It's similar to a question at voting time, that's what they do, they check you out.
And it's just, it's, it's creating a confusion that's not necessary, the planning board did not recommend favorable action. The motion should be to approve, I move that the town approve the article. It, it makes it clear and unequivocal that if a yes vote approves the. It, it makes it clear and unequivocal that if a yes vote approves the article, a no vote disproves it. When you put it like this, a yes vote disproves it and a no vote approves it. It's, it's that simple. So, Bill, if you were to vote.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't agree with it.
You don't, well, that, that's how, that's how a double negative works.
It's a double, it's a double.
The motion is to not approve the article.
Right.
Yep.
So, I made that motion. How are you going to vote?
I'll vote no, because I agree, we shouldn't approve the article.
Right, because you agree. But if you vote, if you vote yes, but you're voting wrong. You're voting to disprove, you're voting to approve the article. When you vote no.
It just needs to be moved to the voting, right?
When you vote no, you're voting against the motion. You're not voting against the article. That's the thing.
No, you're voting against the, you're voting the article.
No, you're voting against the motion.
To see if the town will vote to amend. No.
That's not the motion. The motion is not to approve. So, if you vote no, you're in favor of it. That's how the motion works. If you vote yes to approve the motion, you're not approving the article, you're approving the motion, not the article. So, if you vote yes, you agree that the town should not approve it. That's the problem with, with this, a, a, a proposed motion in the negative. And, and the word not should be taken out of there, and it should be clear, concise, and unambiguous.
It was a similar issue with Kansas.
Can you, um, ask the town administrator if we could seek counsel on this, Ms. Bott?
That's going to be the report. There's not going to be a motion. Somebody else will make a motion.
So, do we have to undo our motion in order to do that?
No. No.
Okay.
You're fine. You got a two, three recommendation.
It is quarter of eleven.
And.
And we're, we're not going to, uh, we're just not going to agree.
Yeah. I think the chairman runs too long a meeting, the new guy. What do you think?
For the last ten minutes, I've been trying to end this. We're fighting over, we're fighting over a double negative.
All right.
All right.
Your meeting, do you want to make any more motion?
So, I would like to, uh, ask for a motion to close.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Bye. Mary Ellen Williams, bye.
Kevin Robinson says bye.
Oh, if there's anything that we need to discuss on that, exactly.
Man, no, no, that's terrible.
So.